It's gonna be fun tonight. It is 6:04, I think. Um, and we are, this is, this is, sorry, 5:04, thank you. Um, and this is a special meeting for us to get a status update from the superintendent search consultant that the board has hired Lydia Muscher of Tradition Search Partners. All five board members are attending via Zoom tonight. And Lydia, I guess, just take it away. Um, I think Lydia's gonna present, like, sort of do a very short presentation to us, and then we can do Q and A. Though she's still in the middle of interviewing people, as far as I understand it.
Thank you, President Tucker, Director Tucker. Uh, thank you all for having me today. I, I wrote some notes, so I'll read off those and then answer any questions you might have. My update today has three components. An update on the work we've done this week, a preview of the work I'm gonna be doing next week, and a bit of guidance about the board's role in achieving a successful conclusion to this search process. So, starting with the update on the work we've done this week. We advertised the opportunity to meet with me by Zoom publicly in the reporter, on social media, in various places, um, and in emails from various representatives of the district administration, the PTA, and various special interest groups, like DEI interest groups and, um, special, uh, parents of children with special needs. By the end of the day today, so I have two more meetings after this one. I will have had the pleasure to meet with, according to my calculations, seventy-nine stakeholders in the Mercer Island School District since I started on Monday morning. That is, uh, four board members out of five, four student government leaders, including the two here tonight. Thirteen teachers, uh, the MIEA Board President, with whom I'm meeting tonight. Six principals, um, eleven administrators who work in the district office, including the current superintendent and the deputy superintendent. And thirty-six parents from all levels, plus, uh, in groups of ten, plus the two PTA presidents and the high school PTA president, who I think is this, a different role. As I conduct this qualitative research, I've also had the chance to review the thought exchange with the team currently responsible for it and begin to validate that qual, those qualitative observations with quantitative data behind it. Finally, I was able to observe a meeting last night during which Fred Rundell and his team presented updates at the various school levels to parents who had left the district and were considering returning. And just for the sake of public record, I announced my presence at the outset of the meeting in writing, so that all participants were aware that there was a search consultant present. Because I'm really committed to meeting with as many people on Mercer Island as I'm able to meet with, I also created a waitlist for anyone who tried to sign up but was unable to attend the scheduled meetings this week. Fourteen people signed up on the waitlist, and this afternoon I offered them, uh, I emailed them to offer additional meetings next week. So on Tuesday through Thursday of next week, observing the holiday on Monday, I'll additionally be meeting with, uh, the fifth board member, the, uh, a technology team internally. A, um, two meetings for parents on, on the waitlist who had signed up. A meeting for teachers on the waitlist, a meeting for community members on the waitlist, so people without children in the district who aren't employed by the district. Um, and an interest group regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. A group of parents of children or students with special needs, and any additional community members who reach out to me as well. So next week, I'll speak to about fifty-five more people, bringing my total up to about a hundred and thirty people from all different stakeholder groups in the process. Overall, everyone I have spoken with has been uniformly and intensely passionate about the academic success and overall well-being of the children on Mercer Island. And I'll be providing a written report of these meetings next Friday, so right after I finish those meetings, and trying not to draw any conclusions about the search earlier than that report. The next steps in the process, uh, will be to utilize the feedback I've received to draft a ranked list of priorities in choosing the next superintendent. And then to utilize those priorities to draft a job description. As I complete these meetings, write that report next Friday, and prepare to, to proceed, uh, into the next phases of the search process, I have two main, uh, ideas that I'd like to raise to this group about the board's role in the process. First, knowledgeable superintendent candidates, whether internal or external, will view unanimous board agreement of their hire as a non-negotiable prerequisite for accepting any offer of employment. Unanimity of the school board signals to candidates that the board is basically functional, can make decisions together collaboratively, and will be supportive of the incoming superintendent. It has therefore enormously beneficial that this group eventually achieve consensus about any hire. I believe we can achieve consensus by using a search process that meets and even exceeds the expectations of rigor and transparency that members of the island community hold. Second, quality candidates will review board meeting notes and recordings to understand how the board works together and relates with the current superintendent. They are looking for understanding of clear boundaries of responsibility and respect for the role of the superintendent's professional expertise in improving educational outcomes for all students. Having provided an update and a preview of my main governance concerns, I want to conclude by thanking everyone who met with me, including most of you on the call, as well as Michelle Mueller, who set up all of my meetings and handled all of the logistics for this virtual visit. I'm really honored to serve the district. I look forward to connecting with additional islanders next week, and I believe I will be able to draw some valuable conclusions from these meetings to kick off the search thereafter. Thank you so much for having me this evening, and I'm happy at this point to answer any questions you might have.
Dan?
Um, yeah, I would, a question, um, in sort, in the various groups that you're having a conversation with. If you're not, if you haven't, if one of those groups isn't the highly capable, uh, program, I think that it might be advisable to do so, uh, to get that input, particularly with the other groups. I think there could be the feeling that, um, that is a group that's being overlooked if it's not a, a discreet group, uh, like some of the others. And then the other is more, um, just sort of logistical, uh, working with, uh, the communications team, if there is a way for, to be, for an opt-in for notifications of any updates um, in the search process, uh, to receive those, and then to sort of broadcast that, whether it be over, you know, both Facebook, as well as, um, you know, on, on the district's website. To just make it, um, as transparent and readily available as possible for, for what's occurring, but, but some sort of opt-in to an email distribution notification, I think, would be very useful.
Thank you for that. I think, um, a highly capable group is a great idea, and I'm happy to add them. And, um, just as a side note, had, there have been a lot of people who self-identified as parents who had children in that program as well, so I, I don't know that I've heard a representative sample, and I appreciate that it's valuable to have that group distinctly represented, so I'm happy to do that. And, um, to the extent that I'm able to work with a communications team to create an opt-in email list and, and make sure that any updates I provide can be distributed, I'm delighted to do that, too. So, thank you.
We can, just adding on to that, we'll be updating the superintendent's search page on the district website, um, after tonight with tonight's update, and then, you know, successive updates. So, um, that's also something we could direct people to, for example, from like, a Twitter. It's not a post, I don't know, a tweet, from a tweet, or from like a Facebook update, so. Um, I have a question, which is, uh, can you share with us some of the types of questions that you've been asking in your sessions, for example, with teachers versus with parents?
Yes, so I tend to start with the same question all the time, which is, basically, did you come with anything you wanted to say? Cause I, I think that people generally do come to these meetings, and you'd be surprised how far-ranging those comments can be, and how long the, you know, the, the process can take to get through that. Additionally, those responses tend to trigger other thoughts and responses in other, um, stakeholder groups, so you could almost run an entire meeting without asking a second question. I do tend to ask domain-specific questions, though, so, um, I had some, I have some initial observations and theories, and so sometimes I've asked questions either to validate or, or, um, ask whether those theories have any legs, so to speak. I have asked about your internal candidate as one of my questions, um, almost to every stakeholder group. Just as a, I had the opportunity to do that, and so I did. Um, and then with, um, your current superintendent and your deputy superintendent, it was less about what are you looking for in a, in a future superintendent, obviously, and more about, um, their experiences and, and how those can be informative through the process. I asked about working style, other sort of lower-level questions, but really, what are you looking for, and what did you come to say?
Thank you.
Who else has questions? I've got a bunch of questions, but I'll.
Um, I did, I think this is an easy question. Um, is there anything that you need from any of us in order to be more successful? Productive, whatever word you wanna use.
Um.
Not, you're not being successful, just.
What's that?
Not implying that you're not being successful, just more so increasing wherever we are.
I, I wasn't offended, thank you. I think to the extent that, I, I know it's a new board, and, you know, it's newly assembled, if you will, and to the extent that you can get to know each other and begin to establish teamwork and processes of collaboration, so that when ultimately we get to the point of a vote, uh, it can be, um, a process that is, um, you know, collaborative and trusting in one another. I think is probably the most valuable thing you can do. And then the two things I mentioned previously, sort of, understanding that that unanimity is important, and also understanding that, the sort of boundaries of what the role is will bear on the extent, like, the extent of highly qualified candidates to apply for the position.
Cam, I see your hand up.
Thanks, Megan Tyne. So Lydia, I know that, um, when we, um, decided to go to, uh, a search consultant and selected you, you know, we came into this as an open, uh, search process. And so, um, as you're saying, when you meet with, uh, the different groups, and you ask about the internal candidate, you know, I would be concerned with people's perception in that it's not a total open search where our internal candidate is one of the candidate, okay? Because it could be many other internal candidates, right? We just don't know other people who might be interested in. So I wonder if, in our communication, we need to reiterate, really, um, the, the purpose and nature of our search, that, you know, that question served maybe a different purpose, but not really as everything is centering ground, right? Because if it's not fully flushed out and clarified, people would have, uh, could potentially have the misconception that, um, we're not doing a fully open, uh, search.
I, I appreciate that. Usually, I, overall, the, maybe I've had twenty-five meetings so far. Usually, I'm not the first person to bring that person up, you know, bring up this particular internal candidate, and, um, and I typically refer to them as an internal candidate. You have an internal candidate who's already been brought up in the conversation typically by a participant. Your point, though, is very well taken, and, um, I think it's critical in written and verbal communication that I do everything I can to represent the truth of the matter, which is that it's a, I intend it, I, I really believe, um, there are kind of two reasons that uh, as a school board might hire my firm, and one is, um, transparency, right? I, and one is stakeholder engagement, and so, um, anything I can do to be more rigorous in, in transparency and stakeholder engagement, I wanna do.
Thank you.
I know you're going to be speaking to, uh, students, uh, next week, is that right?
I spoke to them today, in fact. Was it today, right? Wasn't it today? It was a long time ago. I think it was today.
But other students or just the four student leaders that you mentioned?
The four student leaders. I don't have another student group, but I'm happy to add one if there's interest.
I, I thought we were doing something through the schools, but I didn't hear any concrete plans for that.
Neither have I.
Okay.
Is that something you'd like me to add?
Andrew and Morgan? Would you be able to speak to that, and could we get together, um, the, some, a group from the schools?
I think we would be happy to. The main problem is, is that finals are coming up for the high school, so, um, looking at that document that we're shared on, where we kind of have to get past finals, um, before, but we can meet with, um, I think me and Morgan would be happy to set up groups with middle school and elementary students, and then even maybe a, possibly a bigger group of high schoolers, um, if we think so. Yeah, I think we'd be happy to do that, but we have to get past next week before we can start that.
Even the group of students that we met with on our, um, visit to MIHS was like a fantastic group of students with really thoughtful questions, um, which I know was partly your, your doing. Um, but, but it would be great if she had a chance to, to meet with a group of students like that, you know, kind of representing different interests of the high school and so forth, so. That'd be cool.
I think it might be tricky to meet with elementary schools by Zoom about such a kind of abstract topic, but I will try. I have a seven-year-old, and a nine-year-old, and a twelve-year-old, and a fifteen-year-old, so. Let's, if anyone can do it, I'm gonna give it a try.
It's worth exploring. I mean, I think you can't, you can't get elementary school kids to talk about, like, what, you know, they don't know what the superintendent does, but they can tell you what they like about their school, and what's working well, and what they wish there was more of, and you may just have to set some, some boundaries on it, like, my daughter ran for student council recently, and the rule was, you can't promise anything that is impossible, like, no promising.
No homework?
Unicorn, or no homework.
No homework?
Candy in the cafeteria, you know, so, um.
I was planning on offering them no homework, but since you say I can't.
Other questions, Morgan, did you have anything you wanted to ask about?
No, I was just gonna say, similar to what you mentioned, the group that led the tours, I think, is a good cross-section of students. I know Student Voices for Change is another group that is often looked to, to get some diversity in the conversation, so I'm sure Andrew and I and Mr. Kelly can put together something.
That'd be great. I'm, I'm kind of looking to the board here for just kind of general, like, if, if, if you're objecting to something, please speak up, like, I'm just, I, I'm seeing lots of kind of nodding heads and kind of agreement or, or neutrality, so, um, if you don't like these ideas, speak up.
Also, regarding next steps, uh, after the community report, you will, you will present us with the community report. That'll give us a sense of, what will that give us a sense of, I guess?
I, I wanna provide a summary, like a trip report of the, what I learned in the time that I spent, cause this is really valuable time that people have given me, and, um, valuable access that the board has provided me, so I just, I would like to report back about what I've learned. I think concurrent with that, or as part of the report, as a, as a component of the report, would be the priorities that I believe the combination of the thought exchange and my discussions with stakeholders have articulated to me, and the idea there is, I, I will do like a first draft, and the board, acting as a search committee for the superintendent, will, you know, change, add, subtract, and so on, until we get to a stacked list of priorities. And then shortly thereafter, I'll, I'll just use that final, um, list of priorities to draft a job description.
That sounds great. I, I think that's also helpful for us to understand, um, how the community feels about the district and where they feel the district wants to go, uh, as well. So I think that, that will be use, useful in that respect, too. I appreciate the, uh, depth of the conversations you've had with, uh, with our community members. I, you know, I think it's, it's great that it's a dialogue as opposed to simply filling out a form or, uh, or, you know, a checkbox-type system that we've done in the past, so I, I appreciate that, and I think the insights you, you have will probably be more valuable beyond simply, um, be, beyond just the job description, so I, thank you very much for that.
I hope so. Two things about that, thank you. One is, um, I hope the priorities, usually the priorities go beyond the job description. Two, um, the interview questions that we ask are, you know, are based on the priorities, and then ultimately the selection of the, in, in order to de-bias the process, the selection process is really about the priorities, rather than who do we like, and who makes us feel good, and, you know, that, that's the first thing. And, um, there was a second thing, and I can't remember it, I'm sorry. I'll, it'll come back to me in the middle of the night.
I wanted to ask about, um, since you've had access to the thought exchange.
That was.
Whether, yeah, whether, whether, what you're hearing, and I know you don't wanna like, you're not making, drawing any like grand conclusions yet, because you haven't finished interviewing, but whether so far what you're hearing in your interviews is, is syncing up with what you see on the thought exchange, yeah?
Yeah, I, thank you. That was actually my second point, which was ordinarily, I do actually survey, in addition, I always do these qualitative, um, interviews and meetings, but I also do usually send out a survey. I didn't in this case because of the thought, existence of the thought exchange and my ability to review with, uh, the, the internal team about the, review the thought exchange, so. I don't object to surveying. I just didn't have to do it in this case, was sort of an embarrassment of riches. To Director Tucker's question, um, I would say there's like a, a Venn diagram of the observations or the notes that I've taken and the thought exchange with a tremendous overlap. There are some things that I haven't seen in the thought exchange that were mentioned to me, and there were some things I saw in the thought exchange that weren't mentioned to me. So just to give like brief examples, people talked less on the thought exchange about their personal experiences. In these, um, parent group, teacher groups, people did talk, and I think it's just, I, I won't reveal them, obviously, they were sort of, it was a, I won't say confidential, but it was sort of a family-style discussion, if you will, and so the specifics of each person's individual experience aren't really necessary to discuss, but I think there was more of a discussion of, these are my children, this is my situation, which I didn't see on the thought exchange as much. Uh, and then conversely, um, there's a lot of reference to certain political or politically charged things like CRT and masks that were mentioned in the thought exchange and weren't really discussed at all, um, in my meetings. A couple of times, they were sort of, uh, tangentially referenced, right, like bringing politics in, or, uh, they, they were glanced at, but people, I don't know if people focused more on their personal experience and on policy things, or if they didn't feel comfortable talking about the same things in the same fora, but those were the, like, very slim petals that didn't overlap. By, by and large, there was a tremendous overlap.
Lydia, you said something that, um, I, I want to highlight, maybe for those who are listening or who watched the video, uh, later on. How, when you talk to folks, they really share their thoughts and perspectives and stories with you. And that, you know, for us, of course, is a, is a, I'm like, kind of an implicit expectation that all this is confidential, and that whatever information, um, and then you said, you know, also as well, and so just want to clarify for every, uh, everybody that what was shared with you is confidential, and then what you shared as really is bringing, bringing up all of these large, you know, information and knowledge without any names attached, and is only presented to the board and, uh, not to any of the staff member. Um, and so I think sometimes we miss those kind of point of communication, and people kind of are wary, and so, because you brought it up, I just wanna clarify, I just wanna reaffirm that, uh, for those who have taken the time to share their perspective and feedback, that it is treated with confidentiality, and even the board members don't know who said what. Right, and so, thank you for facilitating those conversations, that they trust you enough to be that open.
I hope to earn their trust.
I've heard, I've heard a lot of appreciation for the conversations, and especially for the fact that you, you stayed late, um, and let conversations run when you were able to, um, because it sounds like some people had a lot to say, which is great.
Indeed, yeah, I uniformly passionate about the education and well-being of children.
Um, well, there may be a few more questions, but, uh, as far as how we're going to get the report from you, that is probably gonna require, and there's gonna be a written report, correct, that will go to the board, but then, um, we're also gonna need probably to meet with you via Zoom. And so this is actually the best opportunity for me to do the scheduling without fifty different separate, you know, emails. Um, you, you'll have it done by the end of Thursday, which is the twentieth, correct?
Yes.
You think?
I have a meeting that goes until ten PM Houston time, so, um, yes, it'll just be really late on the twentieth, correct?
Okay, okay.
It'll just be really late on the twi-
So, for the board, we have our, um, kind of team-building thing from, on that Friday, the twenty-first, from one to four o'clock with Amy Cast. And so I don't wanna add anything onto that meeting either before or after, but I'm wondering if people are available for a meeting, say, like, Friday morning, like, at nine o'clock, maybe? Like, it would be like a one-hour meeting, and then we would be free the rest of the morning, um, and then come back together for a meeting at one o'clock. Would that work for people? Because if not, we're probably gonna have to push it into the following week, and I'd rather get things rolling.
Are we making decisions at this meeting, or are we just re, reviewing the report?
I mean, this is just a scheduling, oh, at that meeting, at the next meeting?
Yeah.
That's a good question, Lydia, are you gonna be looking for the board to give you direction at that meeting?
Well, so I'll provide the report. The report will have a draft of a ranked list of priorities, and at some point, whether at that meeting or after the meeting, I need the board's, um, sort of revision of that draft, you know, of that ranked list. We can do that at the meeting, we can do it via, you know, survey tool, we can do it via email exchange. Uh, the, the medium isn't important to me, and the, we can go through the weekend if that's, um, standard protocol for the board, but, or we can also do it at the meeting.
David, what do you think?
I think doing it at the meeting sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
I would like to have a chance to review the, your report first before, and sit with it. I mean, that's a really quick turnaround time.
Adding something Friday for me is difficult, but that's a lot of, um, at this point.
Then, do we wanna go to Monday?
Fine, too.
That would be.
Twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Well, I guess, working, working backwards, um, from the job description posting, and then the national conference in Nashville in mid-February. What's, what's the sort of the timeline or the thought of when a job description would be posted to give sufficient time to make sure that, um, everyone's aware of the opening, um, in advance of the national conference in mid-February?
I would say if we had seven days in advance of the national conference in February, that would be, I, I'm really pulling that number out of thin air, but I think that's minimum, and fourteen days would be great. It'll give me time. Given the specifics about Mercer Island, I'm not sure that your person is at that conference. I'm delighted to go to the conference and represent the district, but, um, I think more likely we're gonna do outreach specific to candidates appropriate for Mercer Island, and, and that's where we'll find, uh, external candidates, um, whether they end up being your hire or not. But I, I think it's still in everyone's best interest for everyone at that conference to know about the, the opening. So, working backwards, as you said, um, the first day of that conference is the seventeenth of February, if memory serves. Um, I, I could be wrong about that, too. Two weeks in advance of that is February third, which is a Thursday, and, um, it doesn't take terribly long. It takes a day or two to get public posting. The outreach takes longer. Say we started that February first, that's when I'd need the job description to be approved. That's a Tuesday. And depending on how, you know, quickly, we do wordsmithing in this group, meaning five, thank you, thank you, Don. Um, we have five of you and me, the, the six of us, the, the more quickly we do wordsmithing, the, the more quickly we can get the job description out. I think if it took more than a few days, I'd be surprised. I would, um, like to offer the opportunity for public comment to certain extent, um, at minimum. And, and that, this is not my decision, but maybe my recommendation, uh, would be for the people who met with me to have the opportunity to comment. Because it, I want them to have the opportunity to see that their, um, input has been valuable and influential on the job description, and I think it's part of that transparency and building trust with the people who committed their time to me, but that's my recommendation, and I, I know there are regulatory and legal issues surrounding every decision, and so I understand completely and respect if that's not possible.
Well, I think public comment, well, people can always address the board, and so if, if we share the, the job description, and we can allow people to publicly comment on it in that, that form, and that would be everybody in the community, not just the people who, like, certainly, we can, we can go back to the people that have, have, you know, been interviewed and make them aware of it. But, um, I, I would be fine with that, certainly. I think it's great. I don't, I don't think as many people follow these kinds of things. I think it's great. I don't, I don't think as many people follow these kinds of things very closely as we would hope or imagine. We may not get a ton of public comment, but it's nice for people to have the opportunity.
I agree.
And certainly if they've opted in, in some, some form to wanting to hear more about the search.
Yep.
Lydia, would it, please tell me if I'm wrong, but when I think of a job profile, right? I feel like superintendent, most positions are relatively very similar. And then there are some special highlights. So I'm assuming 80% of the job description is going to be somewhat similar to other superintendent job description. And then maybe if you can give us kind of that draft for us, can I get used to it? And then show where we, based on the information that we're getting from the community, where are we prioritizing? You know, is there a list that we prioritize certain things? Or does it fundamentally change our job description from beginning to end? But I just can't imagine a job, you know, is going to be, description is going to be that drastically different.
So the part about the district, so there's typically like an introductory part that's about the employer. That part is not at all dependent on the priorities of the, of the stakeholders involved in the search, right? The district is the district and it has a certain size and it has certain geographies and certain demographics and so on. That part is easy. The part that talks about the priorities and hiring is the part that will be dependent upon the prioritization. And, and truthfully, it just really mostly changes the order and not necessarily the content, right? So if we decide the most important thing is actually the second most important thing, it gets flipped around. So I will begin drafting them next week because I've met with two thirds of the people and I will make those changes as I, as the week finishes out. So I will have, I will have priorities for you by Friday. And if you validate them, you know, over the weekend, we talk about it on Monday. I can have a job description Tuesday or even at the end of the day, Monday.
That works for me, but as far as scheduling, do people have availability on Monday? And, and looking, I'm sitting here looking at the calendar and going backwards also from February, like, like the unsuggested. And it seems like there's adequate time in there to get, to take those few extra days to get the job posting up and so forth. Like I'm mostly available that Monday. Do other people have availability?
It'll be over Zoom too, right?
Yeah, over Zoom.
I'm available between one and three.
I'm, are other people? Oh, I, yeah, I'm available from one. I'm available from, from one on and also, actually, I'm just not available between noon and one. Any other time of the day is fine for me.
So how about, how about one o'clock? One o'clock?
I'm hearing no objections. So yeah, one o'clock.
On the 24th.
On the 24th.
Can I clarify for the record so that we get this posted correctly? One o'clock, Monday, January 24th, special meeting. Topic of superintendent succession discussion.
Action. Yes, because, because it would be action if we vote on the ordering or if we were to approve, say, the job description, something like that, that would be action. Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Anybody? We don't have, we can take a break before our regular meeting. Yeah, Dan.
In advance of the, the meeting on the 24th, can we, if there's a list of like the priorities that come back to post that is a, is a document on, on the website, just, just for the board meeting is an attachment for the community to see.
So you want the community to comment on it before the board?
Not to comment. To see what the priorities are that were, that came back from the, from the discussion.
My only concern is if I make a mistake, I don't want it to represent the, the board. Do you know what I mean? Like, I just wanted to be very clear that these are my initial observations and not the final word of the board. Do you know what I mean?
I mean.
I can do that, but I can do it in writing.
We can post it to Board Docs as part of the listing of the meeting, like that these are the proposed, you know, this is, these are the report, the, these are the priorities based on your report. And then these are what the board will be discussing. So then it's not represented.
That's what I had in mind. This is a, is an attachment, is a document to the board meeting. So for anyone who's dialing into the meeting, they'll know what we're working with. And the same, in the same way from thought exchange, I think, you know, those results were made public for the community to see.
Yep. Yeah, that's a good idea.
May I ask a procedural question?
Yeah.
If the board agrees on a kind of a stacked list of priorities from most important to, you know, desirable but least important in the sense of what are you willing to give up? And an individual voting member has different personal priorities or professional priorities. How does the policy governance model sway that individual to vote? So for example, say I'm really interested in football, which is not a thing that's come up, but I'm using that as a, as an example for the sake of nonsense example, and, and having the world's best football coach is my top priority. But the board ranks it as the lowest priority. Does your governance model permit me to vote only, to vote for a candidate who's a really great football coach? Or does the policy governance model say I have to vote according to the agreed upon priorities of the board? Or does it not address this?
I'm not, I'm not sure that policy governance per se really addresses that. I think that's more of a, more of a question of like the board committing to prioritizing, right? Like I've, when, when I was starting to do research into how different districts handled their superintendent searches, I found that some districts had adopted a, the board had adopted an extremely rigid set of criteria. And it was like, we will allow 30% for, you know, educational qualifications, 10% for experience and 10%. And they, they agreed on that ahead of time. So then it was very clear how they had to vote. We haven't discussed as a board whether, whether that's something that we want to do. So maybe that's part of the next step discussion would be to, to, to think about that and talk about that, right? Because, because yeah, is this, is like, like how binding is this? Is this, I mean, it's not legally binding, obviously, but, but is this us saying, we really want you to look for somebody who loves football or whatever? Just to use the same example versus it's us committing to like, this is our board's top priority, you know?
Yeah. What I'm talking about is maybe like one level down from a formula, like an RFP formula. I'm talking about something a little less mathematical, but conceptually the starting point for hopefully a consensus agreement down the road. Debra?
Yeah, I, I think this is where our board policy that once the board makes its decision collectively, it's a board decision. We move forward with that as the priority. And I think that we really need to stick true to what our policy says in that regard. Because I think this is an example of we all might not individually agree. But once we make a board decision, it's our responsibility and frankly, it's, it's our responsibility and our, our job to move forward with the board's decision. So even if like, once, once something, once the football coach is knocked out, the board decision is what governs and that's what needs to be advocated for by the, I think, I love that example. Needs to be added and as long as we're not in a neighboring district or neighboring school of ours. But I think that really needs to be honored that, that once the board makes a decision in the priority list, that board directors need to be advocating for a selection based on that list.
I'm, I'm curious how you, how you typically go about having a board kind of choose and rank these, these priorities? Like, do you do like ranked choice voting, which everyone knows I'm a fan of?
I do, I do ranked choice voting. Usually I do. So that's why I was suggesting I could send it out as a survey. I've started doing it and I think it's more effective where I do these qualitative interviews first. I draw what I can and now I also have obviously the thought exchange to draw from as well. So I come up with, it's usually about, I would say a dozen suggestions of priorities. And sometimes I get the wording wrong on a priority and then corrected, or I've missing something rarely. So I, we make those changes to what the 12 items in the list are and then we rank them. And then we just have a discussion. So we do the ranked choice, but then there's a discussion about the ranked choice. Sometimes it's clear, again, qualitatively, that something is a little bit amiss. It doesn't really matter if something is fourth or fifth out of 12. What really matters is whether it's in the top few or the bottom few, right? Because if someone's, what you get in a very divisive case, I, it usually doesn't go this way. But what you get is someone who's really good at something in the top and bad in the bottom. And then you have something, someone who's really good at something in the bottom and bad at something in the top. And it's really more of a coarse tool rather than a, and this is why I don't use, assign weights to them. To use a common example, sometimes fundraising is a critical skillset and experience base of a requirement in certain searches. It's very, very important. And sometimes it's not. Some candidates are very strong in fundraising and some candidates are really not. And so you'll get candidates with, you know, extensive educational experience and alignment with the mission of the school or organization and so on, but no fundraising experience. And so it really depends on whether fundraising has appeared high in the list or low in the list, whether that candidate receives serious consideration. So the, the exact positioning doesn't matter. It's really more of the grouping of high, medium and low that ultimately ends up mattering. But if this is something that we could, you know, work hard on getting pretty right, not exactly right, but pretty right, and then really commit to it as a group, I think that's where we're likely to find consensus later on. So we can sort of hammer out the priorities and then it's easier to evaluate individuals at the end on the basis of agreed upon priorities.
I'm fine with doing it as a survey over the weekend or ahead of that Monday meeting. If other people are, it's, it's similar to when we set the legislative priorities for, for our district for the year, which we have one board member who's our legislative representative and they usually just send out a survey and people vote. And then it, it goes back in and then that person compiles it. So, and then we have a discussion about it at the following meeting. So I think that's analogous.
That'd be great.
David, you look like you have a thought.
No, I think this is great. I, I like this methodology where it's not, not personal to, to rank the priorities. And maybe it'll, it'll be helpful as we're, as we're narrowing down candidates and choosing between them. So I, I appreciate putting in the work now to get that solid, very much so. So thank you. I can sign up for that.
I do want to say, maybe in reflection of Tam's earlier point, and correct me if I'm really not reflecting what you were saying earlier, that there can be a tendency to rank with mindfulness of known entities, whether that's an internal candidate or someone else. I've gone so far as to make a bid to a school district that will not be named, that had awaited rubric for evaluation of proposals, didn't like the winner and reissued the weights of the evaluations of the proposals so that their preferred vendor could win the contract. So that's what I'd like to avoid, right? Is the sort of intellectual rigor and honesty to say, no, this is really not a reflection of a particular person, like or dislike, but really what the district needs. And, and is that fair, Tam, of an extension of the point that you're trying to make?
That's great. Thank you. Anyone have any other questions about where we're at, stuff today? Like, no? No, I don't think so. Um, I then am going to wrap this up so that we can have a 10 minute break before our regular meeting starts. If I can grab a snack or whatnot. Um, oh, hello, we have a board cat. Today's meeting featuring the board cat. Um, thank you so much, Lydia. And I'm sure we're looking forward to hearing more from you and good luck with all your remaining meetings. And sorry, now I, we have board dogs too. Thanks, everyone. So we are, are we going, is this a recess? This is a recess. No, this, this is the end of this meeting. This is the end of the special meeting. And sorry, Donna, you're on mute.
Sorry. Special meeting, so you need to conclude this meeting. And then just a reminder to everyone, it's a different link for your regular meeting. You will need to go into that meeting and run through your regular meeting with establishment of the agenda, et cetera.
Right, right. Okay, in that case.
Donna, just, sorry, it's same link.
It's the same link?
Same link.
Tonight it's the same link. Okay. Thank you, Ann Trois.
Executive session, we got a separate link.
The executive session is a separate link. That's for the meeting after, the meeting after this. Okay, okay, great. Then that concludes this meeting. Um, we don't need to vote ourselves out. So I'll see you all in 10 minutes on the same link. Thanks all.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone. Welcome back. It is six o'clock. This time it's really six o'clock. And I am calling this meeting to order. It is Thursday, January 13th. This now begins our regular meeting. We just had an hour of update or 40, 40 to 50 minutes of update from our superintendent search consultant. So now we are having our regular meeting. I need someone to, I need a motion to establish the agenda.
I move, we establish the agenda as published.
Do we have a second?
Again.
All in favor of establishing the agenda as published, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No nays and no abstentions. That passes by a vote of five to zero. Superintendent Koloski.
So this month of January is, has been for almost 30 years nationwide. January has marked as school board recognition month. And I can tell you how disappointed I am that we are in this realm versus the space I'd really like to be in, where I would provide you each with a lovely certificate, which we will still make sure you get, as well as a lovely treat that was provided by one of our presenters tonight. And I hear Andrew already had his, so we do have these waiting for you. And I'm tying them to January as school board recognition month. As I said, it's been ongoing for almost 30, 30 years. And the purpose is to honor the people elected by communities to lead their school districts. And really with the arrival of 2022, what a great start to the year. To start on a positive note, to acknowledge these volunteers who have been elected for doing their very, very best to secure a high quality education for our children. I think it's important to note that school board members wear a lot of hats. I know that all of ours are parents. Some of you hold full-time day jobs and you all have your work on the board as well. And I know that some of you, I had sent you a, a listing that there was the executive director had done of 100 new things that school board directors took on during the pandemic. So it has been a mountain to climb and all of you deserve commendations for the work you've done. The way that school boards have been depicted in the news lately might lead to confusion about what they actually do. They lead and govern their school district through its strategic plan, adopt the district budget and policies and select and evaluate their superintendent. Those are the primary duties and that's the work of the board as outlined in, in our policies as well. So a personal thank you to all of you for your dedication and service to the students of Mercer Island School District. That is what makes this work so special and so fulfilling. I know that we are all here for our students. So attached to the agenda is the governor's annual proclamation for January as school board recognition month. And I would like to read it because I think it really reiterates all of those important pieces to, to the work of school boards. Whereas the mission of Washington's public school system is to assure that all students achieve at high levels and possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible members of a democratic society who enjoy productive and satisfying lives. And whereas Washington's 295 locally elected school boards and nine elected educational service district boards are the core of the public education governance system in our state. And whereas the districts and regions they leave serve more than 1 million students, have a combined annual budget of over $15 billion and employ approximately 120,000 people. And whereas school directors play a crucial role in promoting student learning and achievement by creating a vision, establishing policies and budgets and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved. And whereas school directors are directly accountable to the residents in their districts and regions, serving as a vital link between members of the community and their schools. And whereas school directors and educational service districts provide a passionate voice of advocacy for public schools and the welfare of school children. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize school directors as outstanding volunteers and champions for public education. Now therefore, I J Insley, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim January 2022 as school board recognition month. So we thank you all for your service to our students. We'll make sure you get those lovely little certificates, certificates too.
Thank you.
Including our student representatives, by the way.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, we have no public input tonight unless some things come in that I haven't heard about. So no public input tonight, so we can go straight to the student representative report, reports.
All right. Well, I'm sure as all of you have been noticing, Omicron talk has definitely been dominating most conversations. And that was the case at our student advisory meeting. So our report is a little bit shorter this time because so many of the students took the time to ask questions about like, what's going to happen with school and kind of what to expect in the next few weeks. But to start off, our elementary school representatives reported a lot of kids missing from classes due to quarantining. And one student shared that her class of 18 students was down to just 12 in-person kids. Then it felt just a little bit eerie.
Over at Island Park, the choir is starting up and the students were excited to share that one of their lunch helpers, Ms. Hat, is becoming a full-time teacher, which is awesome. Some elementary schoolers have been taking a part in the simulation of settling in the new world where kids are put into groups with the goal of surviving and having the most money at the end. Last Monday, they started packing their ships and will be starting the next round soon and they're ready to strategize.
So our middle schoolers were a little bit quieter this time with not quite as much to share, but they echoed the same sentiment of noticing a lot of their friends out for quarantining. But the students at the middle school were overjoyed that they now have tables in the lunchroom. So no more rows of chairs. And so the hope is the tables will actually reinforce more distancing between students while eating. And then auditions for their school musical Into the Woods were also set to happen this week.
At the high school this past Friday, the high schoolers had the opportunity to participate in Area Three DECA Conference in the Maiden Bower Center in Bellevue. Over 100 participated and about 90 students qualified for state.
And then on Wednesday, yesterday, the M I H S Black Student Union hosted a Martin Luther King Junior Day Assembly, which was live streamed during Islander Hour. And the assembly included personal stories from students of color within BSU, a brief TED Talk and a speech by high school security liaison, Kelly John Lewis.
The band has their concert band intensive training, which was on Friday after school and Saturday from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. And the orchestra also has their solo ensemble on January 22nd. Finals week is next week, so students are a little bit more stressed than usual preparing for their first finals back in person. And they're trying to remember how to study in person.
And yeah, so Andrew and I have just been doing our best to communicate the ever-changing protocols and updates to our student body. And we appreciate all the work you guys and our district staff have been doing to adapt with every variant that's been coming our way. So thank you all and that's all we have. Yeah, thank you. Director Laurie.
Thank you for the report. And I just want to say as someone who was at DECA judging last Friday, congratulations to our own, very own Morgan, who did make it to the state. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Also, Andrew, I'm with you. I already ate my cupcake too. Someone was nice enough to bring mine to me. So, um, okay. Moving on to the superintendent report.
We have a brief report tonight because we do have a fairly extensive OE nine and OE 10 presentation that staff is going to be giving to the board. But we did want to update you on a couple of topics that we know are always kind of hot topics. And we'll start with attendance. As Morgan and Andrew mentioned in their student report, there have been some absences, of course, because of COVID isolation and quarantine. And so I'm going to ask Dr. Randall to just provide you with a little bit of further information on how that's looked particularly since we've come back from winter break. We know that that's been when this surge really started. So, Dr. Randall.
Thank you, Superintendent Koloski. We have been monitoring and watching enrollment since last Monday when we returned. And we've really been looking at a couple of things, total absences. And you know, what is that looking like throughout the school? And then what, what percent of those total absences are related to COVID-19? Our teachers and our front office registers have been really diligent and really trying to help out by using specific attendance codes in Skyward to help us with that. And what I'm pleased to say is, you know, if I look at just today, for instance, you know, at Island Park, we're looking at only 26 students who are out today. 42% of those students, it was related to COVID. And just to give you a sense, 26 students is, is about 7% of this, of the school. And so our, right now, Islander Middle School, to be honest, is running a little higher than some of the other schools. They had 12% of their students out today, but only 36% or 37% were COVID related. And the high school has actually been doing really well. It kind of started off around that 11 and 12% range. We had a high watermark last Friday at about 14%. And then that's declined to 8% today. And of that 8%, 50% was related to COVID. We have seen the most number of cases in the high school. Obviously we have the most students, but we certainly saw that. And some of that was related to athletics and others. But we're not so far, knock on wood, we're not seeing an additional spike this week, which some had thought might happen as the students came back. So we all knew that as they came back, the only place that they would have presumably been infected with COVID unfortunately, would have been in community gatherings, either in their homes or due to travel. And so the thought was, well, when they come back to school, we might see the following week, which would be this week, another rise because students would then be infecting one another. And we are not seeing that in our schools at this point. So the good news on that front, a couple of things. One is the incredible diligence and hard work of our health services teams. We have added staffing in a supplementary way to get us through this. We've been testing more than ever and we have. Um, we've been testing uh, more than ever and we have kind of taken over the testing. Responsibility in the community because we know it's been so hard for our community members to access it either through private purchase of the rapid antigen. Uh, tests or even through King County, um, as many may have experienced. And so we have been um, testing students and why have we been able to do that? We've also had some tremendous reporting by our students, our staff and our parents, um, and have been very proactive in that. So. I think we're on a good trend right now. Uh, we never want students to be out of school. Uh, but we are also using uh, new, some of the new guidance. To safely return students as quickly as possible as well. And that's part of why we've saw kind of a leveling out in a a decline of percentage of absences. Um, because we were using the test to stay protocol, which we were approved uh, for to use by King County back in November. So, um, that's kind of a picture of what we're seeing.
And I see your hand up. Yeah.
That's that's great news and um, good job. I I think the district has done quite well. Uh, during this surge and you know, sort of looking to other districts and to see. Um, where we're sitting, I think is is um, a testament uh, to the procedures and policies that we have in place. Uh, one question I had is, are we tracking uh, staff uh, absences? And what that's looking like from a staffing perspective at the various schools?
Absolutely. We have, of course, we have a tracking system. Our our staff puts it in. Always even pre pandemic, pre COVID in our um. Frontline system, I think it's called. And we even now have a little. When they open that up, there's a little reminder that if this is COVID related, please make sure you're noting that so that our our nurses are able to track that. We've been doing pretty well. Um, we know that some of our colleague districts have had to um. Pivot their schools. I hate to use that word, but their schools too remote. And it really has been in conversations with other superintendents. It's been based on staffing shortages and we have been able to have um, staff in our classroom, but that is a a credit to our. Amazing staff. They have stepped in for each other. They they know that some of their colleagues are out either in isolation or quarantine or even ill. And um, staff have given up prep periods and those who are part time staff have have agreed to work a full day to um, fill in and fill in those holes. And it's a huge testament to um, our HR department. And our sub coordinator, we all know her is Sherry and she has just worked her mind off. To get the the positions filled on a daily basis, both for teaching positions and parapropositions. And frankly, even in in our transportation department, I was hearing one superintendent. Um, very, very concerned about not being able to run buses because he didn't have enough drivers. So yes, we are. Tracking it. We're we're tracking if it's related to COVID or not. And we've had um, our staff really step up to to fill those those vacancies.
And Superintendent Kloski, if I can just add to, um, you know, I know you and I were talking. Um, especially after we were on the superintendent call, uh, hearing from King and Pierce County superintendents that. Um, you know, just the appreciation we have for our staff, um, just to reiterate of how much they were covering for one another. And people stepping in to sub for one another or, you know, keep the learning going. But as you said, we've been able to also minimize it as much as possible. Um, and then our nurses have just been working above and beyond and we've brought in um, others um, with support on there. Uh, Amy Connolly and Jen Williamson, Uriel Lencina, uh, Sophia, um, that entire team has just been remarkable. Um, and supported by the administrators in the front office with registrars. So. Complete team effort uh, to make it all happen, but it's to try to keep our schools in person, as you just said Superintendent Kloski, and uh, we're really proud of all of them.
I think that's uh, speaks very, very highly of their relationship, the administration and the. Teachers have. That's uh. A tremendous thing and I I thank you so much, Donna, for you and your team and the bargaining team, Erin and Fred. For making this happen. I know this has been really difficult over these last two years. And we've always been concerned about the COVID bargain and it it has occupied a bunch of time, but. Um, you know, it, this is a time when it really. We should be so appreciative of how it's come together. Uh, in such a strong way and how there's a uniformity of purpose towards keeping these schools. Schools open uh, as school districts around us are closing down. And again, also thanks to our community, the ninety plus percent vaccination rate for our parents and kids. Um, really helped make this whole community benefit and safer for it. But no doubt, I am super, super impressed with the work uh, and the alignment we have with the with the teachers. That can't be underappreciated at all. That is a huge, huge win. So thank you.
Morgan.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that one of my teachers is currently out for COVID and. He's been able to zoom into the class with like a substitute advisor in the class. And from my experience, it has worked really seamlessly and. It's really nice, especially right before finals to be able to have our teacher actually giving the lesson. Um. He just like shared a screen with the PowerPoint and it was pretty much similar to what it'd be in person, except he was his face was just on Zoom. So from my experience, it's been working pretty well.
Thank you so much, Morgan, for sharing that example and and to Director DeSousa's point about the community effort. Um, what Morgan just gave was an example of how we are using some of our substitutes. So an example being. Um, it has to be employees who have gone through all of the HR processes to be able to supervise students. And so we um. The word was put out to our high school through our high school PTA that, hey, to keep our schools open, if people could sign up to be um. Parapro subs or emergency certified subs, it would be really helpful. And the same day, I want to say we had twenty five. We finally had to say on Wednesday to the PTA council, okay, no, we're not, we're good now. Our HR is a little bit buried and trying to get everyone processed through. But that too just speaks to the community's um. Goal of serving our students, serving them well and um, having them be in person because we do know that that is is the best way for our students to receive their education. So what a great example, Morgan. Thanks for sharing.
Yeah, thank you.
We also wanted to address a little bit, um, as you actually heard during your special session, the consultant talked about um, attending a session that. Dr. Rundle had organized. He had sent a a letter. We know that there was some interest on some board directors, but we always had that interest as as well. We've always sent. Surveys and done exit surveys with those who leave our district. And so um, Dr. Ronald took advantage of the technology and Zoom and he did send a letter. To families that um, did leave. And um, I I wanted to clarify a little bit what the letter said because I think there has been some um, skewing of some of the words and thinking that. There was some language in there um, regarding people who don't live um, in the Mercer Island School District. Um, so I want him to clarify that and then just talk a little bit about the um, the intent of the meetings. And I know he has more scheduled too. So, Dr. Reynolds, do you want to give us a? An update on that, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. We held our first meeting last night. Uh, and I want to thank Principal Kelly. As well as uh, Suzie Brown from the Counseling Department at M I H S and then Principal Budgets as well as. Excuse me, Dana Dash, counselor down at IMS for joining me um, in hosting the events via Zoom. Uh, we had a a pretty good turnout. It was pretty even mixed between IMS and M I H S interested parents. Um, even more encouraging as I've received a number of emails uh, with inquiries about. Uh, from families who missed the event. Um, and we'll be posting the recording of it uh, so that families can catch up and we've been able to email. And uh, connect some families either with their counseling department um, or us as well. And so we had a nice uh, night, we able to showcase some of the things that we're working on as a school district as uh, and as individual schools. And Tuesday evening will be our next event. Uh, and that will be an elementary focus. And so Jill Kelly. Associate Principal of Northwood and Lakridge will be joining me. Um, and a couple others are are potentially as well. So. We'll be looking to um, continue this momentum. And then we've also uh, thanks to Ian Henry, have been really uh, outreach and I think really intentionally. Uh, trying to promote our kindergarten registration process, which is also uh, due to get started this month. I am stalling for just a second because I think it's the twenty fifth, but I want to get it right. Uh, yes, it is January twenty fifth. Uh, each of our four elementary schools, we will be hosting their own Zoom uh, webinar for families. Uh, who are in each of the attendance areas to join. And then we'll continue efforts uh, through February, March and beyond. Um, as we work with families and really uh, recruit and attract um, current Mercer Island families uh, to attend the schools. And so that kind of leads me into. Um, the your your setup there, Superintendent Kloski. Um, kind of reiterating what was in the letter and the invitation. Um, first and foremost, we were only targeting families who we believe still live in the Mercer Island uh, attendance area or on the island. Um, I did put a disclaimer down at the very bottom. Um, and what it was intended to do was to convey. That if in fact, um, someone had moved, but the mailing address that we had sent it to forwarded it to them. I didn't want families to get the impression that we were recruiting families who may have left and that they could return. To the Mercer Island School District. So I was really trying to do the opposite. But I also know that we knew need to do it in a way that is going to be consistent with our policy and state law. For those of you who have been around for a number of years, um, back in about two thousand thirteen. Uh, we had a complaint filed against us with O S P I regarding our process. And that really had to do with the fact that we were calling ourselves completely closed. And we always entertain applications and I wanted to be very careful on that so that we um, follow our procedures and our policies. And so by no means. Um, uh, were we forecasting about being uh, open or not? And I know that's a discussion later on. Uh, really, I was just trying to convey that this was only for students on Mercer Island. Um, and that we do have a policy that governs our open enrollment process. Um, and they would need to follow that if they wanted to be considered. So with that, I can either, go ahead.
I was just gonna say the policy that Dr. Randall is referencing is thirty one forty one enrollment, non resident students. And as he said, it um, is very specific to um, R C W twenty eight A two two five dot two two five and WAC three nine two one three seven two oh five one. And we do have to be very cognizant of this policy. It does have a provision in it. That says that by um, a certain time in the spring, the date is April fifteenth. The superintendent will announce whether or not the district is able to be open or closed based on facilities and um. Financial hardship. So generally that um, announcement comes as we start to plan our enrollment, which guess what we're doing right now. As we plan for twenty twenty two, twenty three budget. One of the key elements of that is enrollment planning. And um, I know that uh, the. Board President and Vice President were were very interested in some of the community. Chatter, so to speak, about um, where are we going to be open or or closed as previous? At this time in early January, my anticipation is that it's not going to be um. Any different than in the past four years where we look at our enrollment and determine whether or not. Um, we will be open or closed. I I really truly believe it will be the same. We do have to have capacity as a public school. For the students who are living in our district and um, those who who may move into our district. We do have to um, have a process by which um, categories by which folks can apply. If they meet one of those categories. So we'll discuss thirty one forty one further at the next meeting, but at this time, we do not anticipate making a decision that will be. Majorly different than has been made in the past um, four years. And I think that's everything we have on attendance and enrollment, unless you have any questions.
No, I was just gonna say thank you for that clarification, both of you.
And that is the superintendent report because I'm really excited for you to hear the next report and watch a super cool student video.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. Let's roll on into partial governance process monitoring. O E eighteen hundred, O E nine and O E ten. So communication and support to the board and instructional programming.
So you can see on the public content, there's quite a description here of um. What we've been busy working on in updating policies, procedures and course offerings. This is that time of year. As well where our high school is working diligently. I remember um, walking through the office even before winter break. And there was one of our counselors, Suzie Brown, sitting right next to, well, not right next to, they were wearing masks and being as careful as possible. But working together on that course catalog because Vanessa here in our office helps with publishing that, but um, Suzie Brown was diligently going through it. And so. We um, have worked really hard to have a variety of offerings for our students. But I do need to remind the board that even though we might have um, an abundance of offerings in our course catalog. The students have lots to choose from, but we do only staff on the by virtue of the choices that our students make. So if only one. Student picks something and they think it's really interesting, unfortunately, that's not a class that we're going to be able to offer, but we've prepped. To be able to offer it by making sure that we have the staffing and the course designed, et cetera, et cetera. So. I hopefully have front loaded um, Dr. Rundle and our C C R coordinator Jen McClellan, who are here to. Talk to you about what I think is some pretty exciting stuff.
All right. Thank you Superintendent Kloski. Um. Uh, as Superintendent was talking about uh, in mentioning there. Uh, a couple of things that we're making sure that we're being consistent with. Um, one, even though we weren't changing graduation. Um, policy or or procedure. Um, anytime we're making changes um, or uh, making. You know, adjustments, we always like to be really transparent with the graduation requirements. And so. Um, that's why we wanted to make sure that we put that in front of you. Uh, just so that it's um, everyone knows that we're not changing things. What we had found from our counseling department. Is that especially over the last few years as uh, changes have been made to graduation requirements or adjustments um, with pathways. Uh, the language in it was becoming really confusing for people to follow. And so we were really just restructuring. Um, you had also had a discussion at a previous meeting. Um, and I think it's when uh, Representative Sen uh, and Senator Wellman joined and uh, there was some conversation around dual credit and. Um, some of those. And so uh, I thought there was a good idea, a good time to put this out. Um, just so you could see it because it really spells it out what those different options are um, for our high schoolers. So no action there really just um, tried to be. Uh, open and 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 uh, put this forward. Um, the main crux of the discussion then is in conjunction with twenty twenty BP, uh, formerly twenty nineteen. Uh, but the work that you had approved in October, uh, we renamed this to be in to be consistent with WASDA. Um, it whenever we're making uh, changes to our courses and adding and subtracting courses. Um, we need to bring those before the board. Um, again, not for um, straight approval, but we have to for to make sure that we are keeping you up to date. Um, and be to be the community uh, as well. And so Lori Emery has joined us tonight. Uh, as a teacher in our uh, college and career readiness uh, compliments. Uh, she teaches a number of courses at the high school, but she's going to be uh. Uh, talking about one of our courses uh, in particular. And then as Superintendent Kloski said, we have Jen McClellan. Our C C R coordinator uh, and teacher here with us as well. Before um, we take a look at the classes, um, uh, Jen had shared with me a link uh, to a video uh, that one of our students produced as a culminating. Um, portion, uh, it was a culminating project. And so it it does a far better job than I ever could. About really detailing and explaining our C C R um, college and career readiness uh, compliment. And so Andrew, if you would play it. Um, I think it's the best way to get us started in the conversation.
C C R College Career Readiness is a great way for students to invest in themselves and their futures by figuring out something they're passionate about. It gives you opportunities you wouldn't get otherwise in a way that you could not imagine. It's a great way to really unlock your truest potential for now and your future.
C C R stands for college.
CCR stands for College and Career Readiness. And those are the courses here at Mercer Island High School and at Islander Middle School that are content based, but also have an application and skills uh, experience for our students. They're wonderful courses for our students because they provide the why. Why is this subject area is important? How is this applied out in the world?
I think the hallmark of this course is uh, students become entrepreneurs in my class. You know, they're not just journalists, but they're also out there looking for stories. They're learning the the skills that they need to learn so that they can be effective in their job. And oftentimes that's something that they are learning for the first time. And in my mind, that's great preparation for life after high school and college where you just have to keep learning and keep applying and growing.
I sort of always knew I wanted to do something with English. Uh, but journalism is sort of the first thing that like really grabbed my attention. Um, and then the communication skills more than anything that it's taught me like connecting to people. Um, it's sort of is the course that brought me out of my shell more than anything. Um, and also just being able to work in a team. Especially when uh, there was a lot of different opinions and voices that we had to take into account in order to produce something we were proud of.
My absolute favorite part about teaching this course is hearing students discover their voices. And to understand that their words have power. And that what they have to say is meaningful and part of a larger conversation, not only about the school community, but the local community or wider, that their voices matter.
And that part that we've been exploring is this guitar riff. I actually produce my own music outside of this course. So a lot of the musical ideas, as well as the more like business based ideas, like getting in touch with artists and making those connections. I've used a bunch, right? So E, D.
I think my favorite part about teaching uh, this class is that students really get to, like I said, express themselves and come up with new and creative ways to use sound to uh, show off both the types of music that they like and the types of music that they hope to create.
What's most valuable to me about this class is just how open ended it is. Uh, we're allowed to make our own projects, so we get to set our own goals and then work to complete them.
I hope that every student leaves with uh, an inspiration and the skills and tools that they need to create their own music. Hopefully they're creating music that they enjoy uh, long after they've left the class.
International entrepreneurship is our capstone class for our business and marketing pathway. It is an opportunity for our students who have taken all of the other business classes, marketing, intro marketing, business law, AP Econ, to take that knowledge and apply it.
Outside of school, what what I use from this course is the communication skills that we've developed through either emails or phone calls and even in-person meetings. What we learn in this classroom really applies to the real world.
What we do is we create a student run company Mercer Trading. And our students in that class get to run this company.
The most valuable thing about this class to me is the community that we've created. Um, it's nice to know that at the end of the day, you can come to uh, our our classroom and be surrounded by people who want to make the company a better place and make our community a better place.
It's about as real world as it can get. And they walk away with that hopefully with an understanding about what it means to be a business person, what it means to be an entrepreneur.
I'm looking to become an engineer in my future. And this has really taught me a lot about engineering, using robotics, learning VEX. Um, and just being able to understand designs that work um, well.
My favorite part about teaching this course is that it's not a traditional class. It's very hands on. So the students kind of get an end goal and they get the challenge and then it's just their job to figure out how to get there. And I just kind of helped them along the way.
It's a fun class. Um, it's a pretty nice escape from all the difficult harder classes. And I've learned a lot about engineering and programming using it.
So one thing I like to teach the students is if they're gonna, you know, attempt something, don't be afraid to fail. I think that's kind of a really important lesson because not all kids are gonna go into robotics, but that's something that they can take with them everywhere. And if they're gonna fail, fail big. Like if you have an idea, you don't know if it's gonna work, try it anyway.
So what is a COVID nineteen molecular test?
In this course, biotechnology, research and ethics, we prepare students for the future by giving them bio technology skills. Um, they learn really about what's going on in the world. So for example, we're learning about um, COVID nineteen and how the tests work and the vaccines. And I feel like this is the course where we can just really dive in to certain topics.
I took AP Psychology as a way to explore my interest in psychology for a potential future career path. After falling in love with that, I realized that I want to do hopefully psychological research as I go through college and maybe even further than, you know, grad school and as a profession. And biotech is a way for me to explore that interest because it's so heavily focused on research and that process. I wanted to combine my two interests to see if that's right for me in the future.
Well, I recommend the CCR course to everyone. Um, it's an environment where you could fail, make mistakes and learn from them. And it's a great place to figure out what you're interested in and something that excites you every day. And it's a great way to figure out what you could do in the future in an environment where you're not taxed for it. So yeah, thank you for watching.
And so the uh, courses that um, we're bringing forward tonight are um, all coming out of our CCR pathways and the the coordination and and where this intersects with uh, twenty four ten, the high school graduation requirements is remembering that there are three fundamental aspects um, that a student must demonstrate. One is uh, successfully completing all of the credits uh, required to graduate and in the right credit areas. Um, completing a high school and beyond plan. And then third um, is completing uh, a college and career pathway. That can be done through ACT and SAT testing, SBA. Taking the ASVAB, but one of them is also completing a series of courses within a unit or a um, a pathway within CCR. So I'm going to turn it now over to uh, Jen McClellan to talk a little bit about the courses that we are um, proposing and in some cases contracting and actually putting into other areas. Um, and she'll bring in Lori as well. Jen.
Yeah, first off, I love coming behind that video. That's the best way to describe. I love my job and these kids, oh my gosh, you guys, these kids. So that was Mason.
I don't like coming behind it because it makes us look foolish.
Half the time I don't feel qualified standing in front of them. Mason Ward is our DECA student. He asked to do a video project for his DECA project um, to submit it. And we were just like, all right. And um, he poured his heart and soul into that uh, video and we are so grateful. So now we have this amazing finished product, product that I'm like, oh my gosh, we need to share it with everybody. So uh, huge thank yous to him. And he spent much of his uh, break uh, winter break editing that. And then also as a thank you to Tim Hap, which again illustrates, we're so lucky in this community that we have adults that are constantly and consistently willing to mentor and support and uh, guide our um, our students. So we're just really very thankful. Um, um, as Fred did a phenomenal job in um, introducing me. I'm I'm here to to describe some of the new courses that we're looking to bring online and uh, just to back up a little bit, and I don't want to get down in the weeds too much, but as a department, a CCR department, we are tasked at the state from the state to be reviewing all of our courses all the time. And for those of you that aren't aware, we're a little bit different from other courses in that all of our courses actually uh, we have to write these really grisly detailed, long documents called frameworks that um, align all of our courses to a series of content based units, but then also attach it to educational standards, industry standards and to uh, the twenty first century skills that we need to teach. And those are approved at the state level. So we we there's a lot of paperwork. That's really my job. It's a lot of paperwork. So all of these uh, courses are reviewed uh, on a consistent basis, on a yearly basis to make sure that we're living into um, all of those standards in real time. And coupled with that is reviewing as as Dr. Reynolds mentioned, our pathways. Uh, making sure that we have not only introductory courses in our pathways, but that we also have opportunities for our students to actually apply what they learn. Um, that was part of the video was was talking about that application pace, play um, part of the the pathway. And um, so we're reviewing all the time. Um, again, both internally as a staff, but also at the state level, we also have advisory committees um, that we work with. Uh, these are people that are actually out doing all this stuff because sometimes we we need to stay current with what's happening. So that's that's what's going on. Coupled with that is that graduation um, requirement. Uh, uh, the House Bill fifteen ninety nine that was passed three years ago now allows um, a CCR slash CTE uh, graduation that kids can utilize the pathways to actually jump through that final hurdle. So that's the other part is we want to make sure that that opportunity exists. So you have your agenda. So you can take a peek and see what we're we're proposing this year. The first the first part of this is uh, drones and cybersecurity. And um, down below data analytics is also in there as well. Um, in two thousand sixteen, Washington State released an updated version of our computer science educational standards and all many of you've heard me present this before. I've been I've been in front of this this group before explaining that. Uh, we put together as a district, a PLC of our um, our uh, computer science teachers and our STEM teachers and then um, some other associated advisory committee members and reviewed those uh, computer science educational standards and went through all the CCR courses to see where the standards would be applied. And identified these four courses, the four courses that we needed to bring on on board to actually uh, target the the standards we are missing. And that included the drones and cybersecurity and data analytics. And then the fourth course, which actually um, is running, it's very exciting, is our advanced uh, computer applications course, which is exactly what it means. These are our hot shot computer science kids. And this is the opportunity for them to actually apply everything that they learned. Uh, I know AP Computer Science, we love that course too. It's a very constricted course. Uh, it's great, huge content, huge content, but there's not the opportunity for the kids to actually do something with it. And that's what the applied um, computer applications course is. And it's it's really exciting to see what's going on in there. But the drones and cybersecurity both.
Jen, let me, oh, let me jump in really quickly on that. Um, because a reminder to the board also in twenty four ten uh, that the graduation requirement, students can now use a computer science class as either a third year science or a third year math class. And so that's a new provision in the law. And so I just wanted to, that was a good segue into that um, of of that change that's happened as well. Um, they can only use it for science or math. They can't use it for both. Um, but it does add some more flexibility. So.
Yeah. And that that's an overarching theme. We're trying to provide as much flexibility for our students as well because as we know, there's not one size student. There's a there's only different types of students. So give them as much flexibility as possible. So um, anyway, out of that review, uh, drones was a course that came out. What's exciting about that, see here, Woolly is actually running that course. And it does have a math um, opportunity in there, which is exciting um, for that uh, potential. And then of course cybersecurity, as we all know. Um, one of the other lenses we looked through is high demand, high wage jobs. And oh my gosh, cybersecurity. That one, um, we haven't all uh, in, you know, it's in the catalog, we're open up to registration. It's still developmental development phase. And what's exciting about that is we we are building some connections with University of Washington and their cybersecurity degree. Uh, and so it makes sense to actually be able to have sort of a funnel for our kids if they choose to go that that way. The other one, the data analytics one I mentioned in there, we had thought to run that as a separate course and and Dr. Reynolds mentioned about us actually constricting down and decided um, that that made more sense if it was embedded in another course. And so that is now going to be embedded in um, international entrepreneurship as a full semester, uh, second semester core um, component to the course. And looking to try to get some um, certification with that. So the the we're gonna attempt, we'll see the Google Data Analytics Certificate. Um, that is a a um, ambitious plan for our students. Uh, but we're gonna see if we can pull that off. And it'd be wonderful if they could walk out with an actual certificate on their resume. So that's uh, that's that side of things. I'm actually going to bring on, actually I'll touch on the theater tech. Actually, no, I'll bring on Lori Emery to have her explain. Um, I I'm excited about all these courses. I love it, love it, love it. But I have to say, my heart is so excited about this one course um, that we're bringing on. Uh, Lori Emery is here and she's the one that's gonna introduce it and talk about it and how the process has been laid out. One of our pathways is called the Family Consumer Science Pathway. And that's Lori's a family consumer science teacher. And um, at Mercer High School, it's not as developed as it should be. And so that's where this conversation um, started from. Because again, we want to offer our students as much um, access to graduation um, opportunities as possible. And so that's what started this conversation. And she took this initial conversation, um, I think it was last March and has run with it. So I'm going to stop talking and let Lori explain what is happening with the culinary arts program or class.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you so much. And gosh, what will we do without your fearless leadership? Oh, my goodness. Um, so thank you so much. Um, so we are really interested in the opportunity to start and really further develop like Jen talked about this family consumer sciences pathway. We've got some really great groundwork and some upper level classes and especially the health area. But we really like to offer students an opportunity who have interest in the culinary arts. The cupcakes that some of you got to um, try out today. Yes, thank you Superintendent Kloski. Um, were created by a um, student currently at the high school. And she's a former student of mine and she has her own um, cake shop business. It's so well developed. It's so well organized. She's so talented. And I just thought a really cool way to kind of showcase the talent that we've got and the interest that we've got on this island in this area. So we would really love to start a introductory culinary program that could maybe eventually develop into um, a a level of several different culinary programs. Um, is really the dream. We know that we have student interest in this area. We ran a student interest survey. Um, and we kind of had an overwhelming amount of of interest in this area because I think it's um, somewhere where our students haven't seen um, a really similar option to yet. So we have a PLC going right now that's been meeting every single month of some stakeholders. Um, and we've got some people who've really kind of surveyed the area and the space that we're really most interested in. Um, and it sounds like it's a a really, really strong possibility. So we really want to provide students with an option who are interested in the food hospitality tourism industry to kind of find some ways to get some information and some learning and some training to be able to then go on to industry trees that are really hiring right now. I'm sure you probably heard that the food and hospitality industries are, you know, have really high demand right now and really high wage job as well.
So Lori has been um, she's huge heavy lifting. And so we're moving forward on this and and registration. We'll see, we'll see. I'm super excited to see what happens. Um, at present, um, what we've been able to do with our students that have expressed interest in culinary arts and pursuing that as a career. Um, we belong to a consortium called Wannick, which allows us our students access to area high schools and area institutions like Jichin. And we've been utilizing Newport High School's Culinary Arts Program. And so um, that's how we've been able to to um, provide that with our students, but it's going to be exciting to be able to house those students in our own building. So um, I'm so excited about that one. It's it's really exciting. The other two I wanted to bring to your attention, um, one is our theater technology course. Um, we actually, uh, Bellevue High School has a really phenomenal theater uh, pathway and we have um, we have some great facilities. And so we've been able to get that course approved. Um, it's a theater uh, technology theater production course. So it's all the work behind the scenes, the actual application part of it. And so that's in place. Um, and then the last one, again, I'm very excited to see how this happened, how this rolls towards. We actually have two courses that are already approved and running. Uh, one is creative writing, which um, has been housed at Crest uh, for forever. And the other one is a creative writing and publishing class that is at the high school. And we're hoping to to bring those together. And we have a teacher that has um, is investigating that NCAA English. To have one of those courses actually be utilized for that. So that that is, that's an evolving one. But we're excited to see how that can play out again to give as much flexibility to our students. Um, to all our students. And so uh, the the publishing class. And so the the publishing class, their capstone project is is the Pegasus magazine, which I don't know, hopefully you've seen, but that's our, those are published works of our students at at the high school and middle school. And so that's poems and short stories. And it's pretty phenomenal to see that when it's actually goes into publication. So anyway, those are, that's sort of just like a quick surface look. Those of you that know me, you know, I could talk forever on this, but you have a long board meeting. I just, I just, Dr. Reynolds suggested and I want to make sure that leave you in that exciting things are happening. And we're so grateful for teachers like Lori, who just, even in the midst of pandemic, just bring creativity and enthusiasm and excitement and what's next down the road. So we're just so grateful for that. And and I'd love to hear any questions that you might have about CCR in general or these courses in in particular.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you so much, Jen and Lori. I I'm though I'm not a good cook. One of my sons is going to be all over the culinary arts. I do have a couple of questions and please excuse my ignorance because I'm learning all these different pathways as my sons are going through their own pathways. And so there are some question you may not have the answer. But so one, do you know the percentage of our student body who go into one of these pathways? Right, instead of what we think is more traditional? And then two, if they go into one of these pathways, they can, the assumption is that they're going to go straight. You know, they have an interest into an industry and can get a job. But what if they, you know, they they go through this pathway and then so I assume that they are getting high school credits and they're graduating so they can apply to like a traditional four year uni university with these credits as well. But and I don't know, this may be something you don't know. You know, what is kind of, how successful? You know, are they seen as less academic? Because I think sometimes parents, you know, have these kind of concerns. And I would love it if my kids can take one of these pathways. And then also leave the option to like if he goes into, you know, four year university. So those are the questions I have.
Okay, those are fabulous questions. And wow, cue me, cue me up. So here we go, everybody buckle up. So it's in the world of education, tons of acronyms. So I'll back up a little bit. So this is actually the world of what we call CTE, Career Technical Education. And CTE is the rebrand of vocational education. So in the early two thousands, folk ed was rebranded because it had kind of, it had gotten to a place where it was, it was, it wasn't what it should be. Everybody should take vocational ed classes, but it had gotten to the point where the courses weren't rigorous. They weren't living into standards, they weren't sort of standard across the United States. And so that was the rebrand. And it was rebranded to CTE, Career and Technical Education. And this was, this is at federal. So part of the work I do is the federal work. And CTE, that's when frameworks came into being, that's every course has to be tied to standards. Educational industry, twenty-first century, where all all of our frameworks are filed with the state. There's, there's a lot more hoops to jump through in order to make these courses rigorous and consistent across the whole system. So that's sort of the general overview. Mercer Island is further rebranded to CCR, College Incurred Readiness. Bellevue's a CCR district as well. And and why that's, that's a very nuanced, and again, world of ed with all the acronyms. It's a very nuanced nomenclature for what we are because our students, for the most part, do not graduate on June ninth and go to work in a career on June tenth. Our students go to college, a four year college, a two year college, something beyond the secondary high school experience. And so how we teach our courses is we teach our courses differently. We teach it with a lot of discussion about colleges, majors, internships. We do do a lot, we spend a lot of time on on skills and and what you need to put on your resume, blah, 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 blah. But you teach it differently than what you would in an in a high school where a large percentage of your population go to work the day after graduation. So that's, that's one sort of point that I wanted to be clear on about the courses that we teach. To your other points, how many kids take our courses?
Jen, let me, oh, let me quickly just also point out, again, every student, when they graduate, they will have completed two semesters of a of a CCR course. And so all students not only have the opportunity, but actually have that requirement as part of their graduation credits, which pathway they pursue, that then becomes the complement of offerings. But you know, we're able to also, you know, get get students interested in these classes because some of them all of a sudden realize, oh, I have to take this. Then all of a sudden they discover, oh, my goodness, there's that class and there's also this class. And and then there's also the dual credit where I can actually fulfill multiple credits or two credits at the same time by taking certain courses as well.
Yeah, so Dr. Reynolds, absolutely right. So every student takes a CCR course, they all do. And my secret evil plot, and and it's not even secret, everybody knows this, is that I'm hoping to slowly take over the high school one CCR course at a time. So there's a CCR course or multiple CCR courses in every department at the high school except for world languages. And that's my one, and I know Maggie, Ty Tucker, and I've talked about how we can actually do that. And that that'll be my next plot is how to get in into that with translating, you can do it with translating. Anyway, so so we capture everybody. And what we hope is somebody takes a course and says, oh, that's interesting. And then they take a second course or third course. We call those completers. And in terms of gradu- graduating, and to your point, you're exactly right. In terms of completers, there and and we don't have as much issue with graduation, you know, getting kids across the finish line here in Mercer. But definitely, if you look at stats across the United States, when you get a kid to be a completer, taking two or more CCR courses, the percentage of them actually graduating sky rocks, almost doubles because they they find, they find meaning, they find meaning. So that's our goal. To the pathway part, we we have six pathways at Mercer Island High School. The one that, you know, we have a super well-developed business and marketing pathway. There's so many courses in that pathway. And so a student can take two really easily. Going back to family consumer science pathway, we we don't have as many courses there. And so to get some more in that pathway, it gives our students greater option. The dual credit piece, we articulate with area colleges. And we have currently offer over seventy college credits in our CCR courses. And everybody knows about Reading Start and everybody knows about AP. They they just don't know about dual credit. And you just have to take the course and you get the and get a B or above and you get those those five to seven credits from from an area in college. So that's, that's another component of what what we offer our students. So anyway, it's, I I'll stop talking because I can keep going. I love this stuff. That was a great.
I would just like to chime in again because as Jen said, CTE is really across the nation. And you could absolutely see kids take off with a passion and head into a post-high school experience that is really specific to that passion. I will forever remember one of my former students who took a culinary arts class as a freshman and ended up being accepted. And it was a tough place to get into, the Culinary Arts Institute and came out as a very well-paid chef because that's where they're going to to find those employees. So if sometimes those CCR or CTE courses will really then help a student in their direction for what's their post-high school education going to look like that really helps them follow those passions.
And I I'll just chime in to say, and I I see you, Dan. I'll just chime in to say that also for the kids who are mostly kind of more like academically inclined, you know, when it comes to what they're going to do after high school, these type of courses are are invaluable as well because I just finished helping to usher my my senior twins through their college application process. And the one of them was applying to engineering schools. And every single one was like, well, what have you done to develop your interest in blank? Tell us why you would want to come be part of our, you know, robotics program or whatever. And these kind of classes are really helpful in in that light as well. Dan, you've been super patient, thank you.
Yeah, two-part question. One is, are these new course offerings, are any other courses falling off? Or are these an additional to the current ones that are offered? And then two, sort of following up, I guess, on Tam's question about the number of students, what is the average enrollment in the CCR courses vis a vis the non-CCR courses? You know, there's been some, you know, consternation that for certain advanced mathematic courses, for instance, that there's not enough students, you know, to warrant a live class. So I just want to get a sense of what the average number of students are in the CCR courses and, you know, that that they're being filled up.
Numbers question. Off the top of my head, we had something like thirteen hundred kids in a CCR class last semester. And I'd have to act, yeah, I'd actually, yeah, I'd have to run the numbers again. Again, we're everywhere. So even maybe you think of like gen ed classes, sometimes it's a CCR class, like AP Environmental Science, AP Stats. You know, a lot of those we have, we're everywhere. And a lot of our students actually take two two CCR courses. So we tend to, we tend to be well represented. I mean, there's a lot of kids taking our courses, that's one.
And let me answer that to Jen in a different way because I think there's the other part of that is, you know, how about the number of students who are in our particular like fifth period section of a class, I think, is the other part of that. And we do staff these classes in general in that are commensurate with our other classes. And so we're not running classes that are, you know, ten and eleven kids. In fact, there's been a couple of CCR courses that we've really wanted to go the last few years and they just haven't generated enough interest. And I think that's what Superintendent Kloski was saying is that, you know, all of these we we add in there and we know we can't run them all. But we're also trying to create classes that we think are adapting to the interests of our students. Radio was really at one point, you know, kind of limping along. And it was really Joe Bryant who came along. And now we've got numbers. We also stack classes, which means we'll put advanced learners in with introductory learners so that a class can actually run. And so whereas we might only have thirteen of each, if we put that class together, but we teach it differently depending on the student, now we can run it because we've got twenty-six.
And I just want to add one more point into it as well. CTE has a separate bucket of dollars. At the, those are federal dollars. There's a couple of different grants and and Jen works really hard to get all that paperwork filled up as well. There's Perkins dollars, there's CTE dollars, and those are federal dollars. So they're not in that same bucket as our basic ed or frankly, even levy dollars. So when you see some of the things and you think, oh, wow, that's the robotics piece, that's, you know, that's great for our levy dollars. Well, we have CTE dollars that support that and that has to be very specific to CTE as well.
Deborah. Hi. Jen, thank you as always. And your enthusiasm is contagious. And also thank you to you and I see some of our other of your DECA teammates on this. So thank you for, I know the hours and hours and hours of work that you guys put in to make that DECA competition happen with, you know, the normal preparations and then dealing with all of the changes at the last minute for COVID and making sure and kids that weren't able to go are having opportunities to not feel left out so that we can support, supporting our community to stay healthy also. So thank you for all of that. I know that they all, well, at least the ones I heard from, which was a lot, had a great experience. So thank you as always. I I just, I want to push back a little bit. And and in terms of, you know, the, I I love hearing that, you know, these are the easy classes. And I believe is that it's because kids are finding their passion. When you find your passion, it should be a breeze. And just because something is easy doesn't mean it isn't valuable. And I think it's the the most valuable. One of the things in our, in some of our surveys that we see that is most concerning, to me at least, is where kids aren't relating to their education. How does it apply to me? Well, this is absolutely where it all applies. And and just as an example, I I judge the accounting portion as a boring business major. I judged the accounting portion of for DECA last week. And some of these kids had taken accounting and and some of them clearly hadn't, or at least are in the beginning stages of it. And they're applying these accounting principles to real world businesses. Excited about it and they're getting to be creative. And if that isn't education, I don't know what is. So if they're like breezing through and getting straight A's because of it, that's awesome. That is a success. That isn't, we need to think that it's less of an education because it's too easy. I mean, the same thing with band. If, you know, it, I don't think it's thought of as an easy A anymore. But, you know, when I was a band member, it was an easy A because we were committed to doing it and we were there and we were participating. So those things should be celebrated. You know, as a kid who, as a parent of a kid who is in a pathway now and did not expect to be, she's, it's the way, you know, I was never worried about her graduating, but but she loves these classes and she loves doing the homework and the assignments. And this is academically oriented kid who wants to spend a lot of time outside of school and academics. But it's real world applications and it's that creativity. And then, you know, our world is different than when us parents for students. They have, they have all of the world information at their fingertips. It's how do you apply it and how do you relate to the world and what can you offer the world with these things? And that's what you're doing and thank you. And I love that you're expanding and looking and and I didn't realize there's definitely got to be an application in world languages. Especially start, I mean, I got to tell you, I work with interpreters almost every day. The amount of money that interpreters make is stellar. So thank you for this department. Keep going, keep growing. And I love that students have to take it because it takes that stigma of the vocational stuff away. We all, all of us, like we get through school and then we go to a vocation. Like there's this disconnect or this separation between, you know, four year university and and vocation. We just extend education and then go to a vocation. Like that has to stop. Like, why are we waiting until we have to choose a major that we've never had? And like for me, who was a business major, I had no idea what that was and that wasn't my world. And so why are we waiting so long? So thank you for making these these courses available to our students and having the enthusiasm so that this department is growing and growing. So it is valuable. And so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That was lovely.
I do want to reiterate that when Jen talked about the framework and the CTE framework and the guidelines that they have to assure are in every coursework. Those twenty-first century skills, as an example, the pedagogy and instructional practices that CCR teachers participate in as their professional development are what we know now to be the best pedagogical and instructional strategies for engaging students, particularly in their own learning. So what we really need to do is be supporting all our teachers in embracing these great instructional strategies for all all kids.
Just ask about the theater tech and production courses. That that's that's one course, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Is it, is there someone that we, do we have someone to teach that course yet?
I, we are in the process of interviewing and hiring. I don't know if I can actually, we're we're in the process of interviewing and hiring. We 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 wanted a teacher in there and I'm really excited about this particular class and that where it can go. There's a lot of ways we can make it expand out with that. And and working in conjunction, frankly, with radio and, you know, we have, we have lots of other sort of information, information, communication opportunities that we can utilize, your book, journalism, all that. So it's, I'm kind of excited to see what happens.
That's great. Everyone's already said everything I was going to say, but basically I'm a huge fan of of your work and of all these classes. Like it just, as everyone's been saying, like it really, it really helps students kind of connect meaningfully with what they're learning. And please pass on to the baker, both you and Lori, that those are exceptional cupcakes. And I am a total baking snob, but really like the icing in particular. Yeah. The great school board bake off, she's the winner.
Andrew, what was the word you used for for your cupcake?
Divine.
Yeah. Divine, seriously.
He got it at lunchtime today and I think he ate it about four minutes after we handed it to him. I'm like, that's for the tonight. And he said, gonna eat it now. So it was, it was adorable. You guys, thank you for your time. My door is always open. I would love to chat with any of you, any thoughts, just anything. I always consider our community as a partner in this. We are so lucky to have this group of adults, both here and in the broader sense, that are just willing to share talents and and insights and advice and thoughts and blah, blah, blah. and advice and thoughts and blah, blah, blah with our students and our student body. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And unless there's no other questions.
Real, real quickly, uh, I was looking for the data analytics and culinary arts course when I first read that title. So that could have been a cool mix, but.
That could have been. That's next. Look for me next year. I'll bring that. Yeah.
To Director De Souza's point, I knew a bakery class that was also meeting a math requirement because of the math that was involved in the baking. And I can see Lori kind of nodding as well.
What about science?
Yeah, the chemistry as well. There's, there's a bunch of opportunities out there with courses that we could go all different ways. So it'll be fun to see where we go.
Microbiology. David, did you?
I will also say, thank you for the computer science courses. I think I was looking, Microsoft is forty five years old now. And in the last four to five years, I think is the most amount of computer science courses we've had uh, at our high school. So I think that's, that's a really nice shift towards uh, giving kids an opportunity with STEM and the jobs.
Yeah.
And uh, the growth, that's just fascinating there. So thank you very much for all that.
Yeah.
David, I had to say, I expected you to be standing up and doing a happy dance when you, when he was talking about all the computer science classes and the drones and the robotics as well. So it has really progressed.
Thank you, everybody.
Andrew, did you have?
I was just gonna say, um, w- without CCR classes, I wouldn't be here right now. And without the personalized classes I've taken in the CCR classes like radio and leadership and the mentoring from marketing um, teachers and everyone, I definitely would not be here right now. And it's, it's personally really impacted me and what great classes um, and and teachers that run these classes. Um, I'm just, I, I looked over all these and I just, I think the students are absolutely gonna love these courses in one way or another. If it's drones, which is just the coolest class ever, or culinary arts, I mean, these classes are just gonna be a perfect addition to um, the school. And I think students are gonna be just, you know, jumping to take these courses cuz they're, they all look amazing. So just thank you, Ms. McClellan. Thank you, Ms. Emery. Um, this is some really awesome stuff.
Thank you both.
The next, oh, actually, that's a whole new agenda. That's not for me to move to.
A waiver of high school graduation requirements.
Now you can move to it, Dr. Reynolds, as soon as I say that this is an adjustment to the board policy based on um, new legislation. And this is your first reading. So the only um, action you might choose to take tonight would be um, a full second reading at the next meeting or move it to consent agenda for second reading. So take it away, Dr. Reynolds.
All right, thank you. Um, so uh, the waivers for graduation obviously have been uh, really a point of emphasis during uh, COVID. Uh, in fact, you've passed two resolutions as a board. Um, one for the graduating class of twenty twenty and then again for the graduating class of twenty twenty one. As I recall, Director De Souza, I think you were even asking as early as perhaps uh, August, uh, you know, isn't there a way that maybe we can know a little bit further in advance about what the options are for our students? And we've been really working um, the counseling department, the learning services department, um, the administration at the high school, really trying to get out in, in front of this. And we think there's gonna be a little more latitude um, for this class. But I don't think that it's going to be um, to the same degree that it was for our students in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. The uh, we made three changes uh, with twenty four eighteen. One was to the board policy and I'll start there. Uh, and then we cleaned up the procedure a little bit and the forms. And we made those other adjustments based on lived experience. Um, it's not often that we have many uh, waivers that we're granting. Uh, but in the last two years, um, because of the influx and also a greater desire to do some better tracking and monitoring. Um, not that we're not tracking and monitoring that they're appropriately being handled, but wanting to get the, get a sense of um, you know, is there a pattern in terms of um, uh, types of students or profiles of students who are um, accessing this or needing to access it? But for the purposes of your uh, conversation, um, the real substantial change, which was a legislative change um, being brought to you is simply adding this bullet in or have been released from an institutional educational facility. Um, and that being one of the extenuating circumstances um, that we could use uh, for our students uh, to waive uh, high school credits. Um, someone might say, well, how often does that happen for a Mercer Island student? Or, you know, what, what might that look like? And um, it's really a broad range um, of, of um, in instances where a student might um, uh, be coming from an educational facility. Um, in this case, and it might be for mental health reasons. It could be for physical health reasons. Um, it could be for um, drug and alcohol use. And uh, we don't wanna penalize our students and and not give them an opportunity to graduate simply because they didn't uh, complete um, two credits um, that might be in elective areas. So that's really where that comes from. Um, the rest of the language changes here um, are really cleaning it up so that staff can better interpret and respond to exactly what they need to do and what administrators need to do to be sure uh, that we get our students graduated on time following the correct procedures. Um, so that's uh, really the gist of um, what we wanted to bring forward tonight. Uh, and happy to answer questions about this. Director did.
So Fred, I um, you mentioned this a little bit, but I just wanna clarify that um, when we talk about health condition, that are we including mental health in there? Because you mentioned it a little, a little bit in the releasing from the institution. But sometimes, you know, like, do they need to go to an institution before we uh, allow this, you know, uh, waiver? So and so I just wanna clarify whether the uh, mental health was as part of the health condition. And also about for students who uh, may be bullied at school. And um, it's not, you know, they might not exhibit uh, clinically diagnosed mental health problems. But if they don't feel safe at school and feel bullied and are out for a certain period of time, uh, are they also covered?
Yes. And so the list that's on there, um, the policy reads unusual circumstances may include, but are not limited to. And some of what you would, you I think are getting at are trauma, personal or family crisis. Um, uh, and really anything that directly compromises a student's ability to learn. And so there's lots of flexibility. Um, it's really just making sure, I think the, the legislature and state Board of Ed really wanted to just make sure that um, students who were needing to leave school for a period of time to seek treatment, to seek counseling, to se- seek other supports, um, that that was crystal clear to school districts that that was an extenuating circumstance that should certainly be brought into play and we should not be holding that against students.
Okay, thank you. Ask a related question about what is um, I don't have it in front of me anymore, the educate, the like behavioral health educational setting? Because I could tell you from firsthand knowledge, they don't, like if someone's at treatment of some, whether it's drug and alcohol, alcohol or behavioral health, they're not learning school. Um, is it, is it the topic they need to be learning? Is that what they mean?
Generally, um, uh, maybe it's easier if I just kinda describe what, what it looks like in practice. Um, if a student is participating, um, there, we're working with the teachers. We might be doing home hospital where we're bringing um, teachers or tutors to the student. It might be that we are um, modifying and um, changing assignments or or learning expectations. So a student would still be engaging in their academic learning. But we really then try to put together a full plan to keep that student on track, number one, to graduate. So they don't even need to waive credits. But in the instance, if we do need to waive credits, we have that ability um, to waive. Um, they can't be of the seventeen core, but of those other um, seven credits that a student is taking, we can start to look at flexibility there. Um, so as to not keep a student from graduating as long as they've met the pathways and they have their high school and beyond plan.
I, I just, just, I, I think it's great. I, I hear almost every day from kids that, you know, I can't go to treatment um, because of school. And so, you know, but then my argument to them is, but you're not gonna succeed at school until you go to treatment, right? So um, think, I, I, removing this barrier is really good for kids. So thank you.
And one of the other things that we do, um, you know, we might have a student who um, they, let's say, first semester, algebra two. Uh, they earn a B and then something happens. And the second semester, um, the first quarter, they have a D. And the second quarter, they have um, or it'd be the third quarter and then the fourth quarter, let's say they end up failing it or they're failing that course. Uh, we have the ability then to go back when we're working on summer school plans to rebuild credit recovery around the components of the class that the student didn't pass or didn't master in terms of the learning. And so a student isn't having to retrace all the way back and complete an entire semester again. Um, and that's one of the things that our counselors and our teachers and then our summer school team really work on when we're talking about credit recovery. I know that gets a little away from waiving um, credits, but um, it kinda dovetails, I think, Director Lori into what you're getting at. Um, when a student has experienced trauma, um, or they need to seek help, um, how do we do that if, if they can't fully complete it? Um, you know, we don't want a student having to retake an entire course for which they've mastered some of the content already. So no action on this tonight. This is just the first reading as Superintendent Kloski um, stated. And um, uh, we will bring it then to you uh, either on the consent agenda or um, back for vote. That's really, I think Superintendent Kloski and uh, will make that determination with Board President unless you're making that decision tonight.
So. I had thought we were voting on it tonight, but, but be, just because it said action discussion, but I see that it's just a first reading. Um, I'm fine with having it roll back.
That's up to you.
Yeah.
Yep.
David? Was that?
Consent agenda sounds fine.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, um, and the next part, the next item is uh, board policy one thousand and one governance commitment superintendent succession. Um, and of course, we just had an hour long meeting, but that which will be viewable uh, with the rest of the meeting on uh, board docs, probably sometime tomorrow or the day after. If um, if people are, are watching this part of the meeting and didn't know about the earlier part of the meeting. So we just had a very, very briefly, we just had an update from our um, search consultant that we hired Lydia Mushar of Mushar of Tradition Search Partners. Um, and she has been, she was originally supposed to come in in person this week to um, visit the schools and do some interviews and um, do maybe a couple of big group interviews. And unfortunately had to cancel her visit because of the Omicron surge. Um, and the, the new, you know, the return to stricter protocols that were being put in place at the schools. So she's been interviewing people on Zoom and that's actually turned out to work very well. She's gotten to, I think, speak to a lot more people than she would have been able to meet otherwise. So so far she's, she's, um, by the end of tonight, she said she will have spoken to seventy nine people in the community. And um, she's got another bunch of meetings lined up for um, for tomorrow and for next week, Monday through Thursday. So she's met with parents and she's met with um, with teachers and she's met with uh, non-certificated staff and with a lot of administrators. And um, she's met with some student leaders, although we're hoping she can do more of that. And um, she's met with uh, parents from, with particular common interests, like parents of special needs kids. And um, uh, she's going to be meeting with uh, people who have a role or an interest in diversity, equity and inclusion issues. Um, so uh, she didn't make a report to us tonight. She basically just sort of told us what she's been doing so far. And then um, she is going to be finishing her interviews next Thursday. She will have a report, the written report that she will submit to the board on Friday, which is the twenty first of January and um, also a list of priorities for um, for the board to rank in terms of like which qualities we feel are most important for our next super, to have in our next superintendent. Um, and then the board will have a special meeting on the twenty fourth to meet with her to discuss the report and to do our, um, to discuss our rankings. So that will be the next step. Um, and she also will be attending the uh, she'll also be attending the National Assist, it's, that's not what it's called, the AASA. Um, the superintendent's conference basically in Nashville, Tennessee, um, in mid February on our district's behalf to do some recruiting and um, get to know more people in the superintendent space. And so um, uh, that will be happening as well. And, and I did wanna just kind of apologize to the community for the late notice on the, the signups for these meetings. Um, because as of last Friday morning, we still thought she was gonna be coming in person. So all of this online stuff had to be set up kind of very last minute. And I will add my thanks to uh, Ms. Mushar's thanks earlier to Michelle for, for really going above and beyond and also to Ian for um, helping to coordinate all of the outreach and and, you know, um, Zoom sessions and so forth. So uh, thank you to all the, the community members who've taken part so far. And just know that if you're still interested, there, there, there is a link on the district website. Um, if you go to the superintendent's search page, there's an update there and there's links elsewhere and it should be in your email. Um, for how to sign up if you're still interested in um, taking part in one of these interviews. And she will, she will keep adding groups. The groups are no more than ten people at a time. So she'll keep adding groups until everyone who wants a chance to um, uh, you know, express their, their thoughts on this uh, have had a chance. So that's it. That's my update. Um, thank you all. And uh, moving on. Uh, full governance process monitoring, board policy eighteen hundred O E seven, financial administration.
So this is the annual monitoring of operational expectation seven, financial administration. This is a level one. And um, we apologize as this was really, and still has some marks on it. But obviously that all will be determined by the board as a level one. And um, Executive Director Berkstrom is gonna walk you through each of the items that um, make up operational expectation seven, financial administration. Time.
All right, can we all see it? Can we see the form? All right, great. Um, as I said, this is financial administration. This is the board's policy expectations for the business, uh, the superintendent and thereby the business department underneath, uh, how we manage the fiscal uh, uses and safeguard the fiscal resources of the district. First, we have implementing proper procedures necessary to protect and account for district funds and keep complete and accurate financial records in accordance with accounting systems decided by the State of Washington as contained in the school accounting manual. As an example, uh, currently for the twenty, yes, twenty dash twenty one school year, um, which is the last year that we completed. Uh, we will be undergoing audit uh, starting mid February, midnight February, prior school year nineteen dash twenty school year. Uh, we received a clean financial audit. So we have two audits. One is a financial audit where they audit the financial statements and the controls over the financial statements. And then we have an accountability audit where they review our policies and legal compliance. Um, our financial audit was completely clean. There's no problems whatsoever um, with our accounting practices and uh, with the balances as presented. Uh, and we fully anticipate another clean audit for the twenty one, uh, twenty dash twenty one school year. Um, two, uh, point two, ensure district reports and filings required by any governmental agency are filed accurately on time. Um, we've met our deadlines uh, in terms of filing our budgets, uh, status reports, um, submitting all of our reports to the state auditor's office uh, as well as our year end financial statements. Uh, three, keep the board of directors informed of the district's financial condition, including providing cash flow analysis for each fund with each budget status report comparing the annual month by month cash flow projections with year to day actual cash balances. So we provide the monthly financial budget status reports and we provide frequent, um, we did provide in this last school year uh, frequent budget status updates as well as planning updates uh, and projected um, cash flows um, for the year. And we will provide another update uh, on January twenty eighth uh, during the study session. Um, Authorized only authorized expenditures that are within the adopted budget and ensure that the school, the district purchases are based upon reasonable judgment. And we have a number of controls over purchasing as well as providing frequent budget reports to the buildings and departments to ensure that they are monitoring those budgets closely. And we are having frequent conversations with them about the best uses for their budgets. There is a number of eyes that touch any purchase before it happens to ensure that they are reasonable and prudent. And this one will garner some conversation, maintain an average annual budget reserves of at least eight percent with a target of ten percent. They're adequate to be consistent with the best financial practices for public school districts. As we know, over the last two school years, we've been facing significant challenges based on enrollment decline due to the pandemic as well as using our resources. The reserves that we had stocked away based on this policy to continue our operations through the school years under the guidance and auspice of the board. Last year you marked, you made some special notations on item five in terms of compliance. And that's entirely reasonable to be making some additional special comments and considerations when it comes to compliance or non-compliance with item five. Only incurred debt that is necessary and allowable by the adopted budget. We do not have any long term debt outside of our approved bonds and those are handled in a separate fund. We do have some lease agreements which under revised accounting standards are now considered short term debt. We lease our printers and copiers throughout the district. As which is a fairly standard practice. So those are, those are considered lease obligations and in the short term debt. We do have some credit card on use now that the district several years ago authorized the use of purchasing cards throughout the district. And that is more a rotating payment. We make payments on those credit card transactions every two weeks. So it's we're clearing out the transactions as quickly as possible to ensure that those are hitting the budget status reports that go to the buildings to make sure that they are getting the most current information possible. So when it comes to revolving debt, we have very little in terms of short term debt. Prevent unauthorized transferred monies from one fund to another. There are two ways that we can transfer funds from one fund to another. One is if it's a reimbursement of an expense that is handled through one fund, but really belongs in a separate fund or the board is authorized an inter fund loan. We do take care of the our, let me back up, the technology levy that is currently expiring and up for vote again provides not only staffing, specific staffing allocations for the instructional technology coaches, building technology specialists. But it also provides technology stipends for the teachers to help compensate them for the professional development that they need to continue their current understanding of technology. So as we pay that payroll out of the general fund for those salary components, we need to backfill it from the capital projects fund. And so we transfer that over. It's a reimbursement. It's not an actual loan or transfer. If we were to transfer or borrow money from another fund, it would require a resolution by the board. It would require specific purposes and any inter fund loan does require that the borrowing fund pay interest to the lending fund. Which is awesome. So you wind up in a bigger hole than you started with, which is why we don't often see it because they don't want you to do it. So there, the and the only time that we would ever really do that is if we are incredibly concerned about cash flow to make sure that we're meeting payable obligations for that specific month. And there are timelines for when you'd have to repay that. So it's not something that we see often. It's not something that we want to do, but it is an option, but it is not anything that we are currently examining or bringing to the board at this point. Eight, settle payroll and other financial obligations in a timely manner, avoiding interest charges, late fees, penalties and a loss of discounts. At this point, we're we're doing well. And nine reasonably pursue receivables. We don't have very many receivables. We do bill the foundation again as a reimbursement. We spend the money for the grants they give us and then we submit them a bill and then they pay us back. Those happen routinely and are quickly handled in terms of. And that's really about all the receivables that we have. And that's really O E seven being sped read. So if there's questions or comments or concerns about any of the items on O E seven.
I guess I will start real quick. I, the other one, I don't think you mentioned was the budget report you do for the citizens. Each year, the guide to the budget. That's been super useful. I didn't see that listed here. And actually, as many people have been looking at the levy and wanting to understand the budget more, that's been a been a super great resource. So thank you very much for that. That that's super helpful.
Oh, sorry. I was just gonna say if there are, if there are any items or consideration or information that the board does want to see put into the guide to the budget, please let me know. I am more than happy to revise the guide to the budget to help it be a more useful tool to the board and the community. So if there are any ideas or suggestions, please let me know.
The the only one that has been coming out was how is the local levy, the educational maintenance and operations levy? How does that transfer and affect the the overall budget? I don't think we have a section for that actually in the guide to the budget, but that would be something to consider. And it sounds like we actually do do transfers when we make payments to teachers using local levy funds.
Yes.
And then the other one was on number five, the budget reserve. You know, I think last time you mentioned and you raised some raised some really great questions when we were reviewing it. When do we consider this? When do we consider, what timeframe are we considering this at? Is it immediately now? Is it the trailing budget or is it the expected end budget? And I don't think we we did clarify that. Although upon reading the guide to the budget, you were very clear in the guide to the budget. So I think we should probably take your words from the guide to the budget where you look at the fund balance at the end of the year and make that part of this. This monitoring report. I don't think it would have changed the outcome last time. But I I do think that's a more accurate representation. And you know, and I think it deals with the fact that we get reimbursements and such at the end of the year that we we've spent down our fund balance. We do get reimbursements for it. That brings us back up. So so that makes a lot of sense.
Dan.
And then finally, I I think. So so now I'm asking you, are we meeting our requirements at the end of this fiscal year or did we meet our requirements at the end of the previous fiscal year for the eight to ten percent guideline?
So at the end of, the end of nineteen twenty, I believe we were just a hair over where we needed to be to meet compliance at the end of twenty dash twenty one. We had a fund balance of four point two to eight million, which represented five point eight percent. So we were below the the floor set by policy.
Okay, thank you.
Dan.
Let me hold my hand. Yeah, so I just want to speak for discussion a little bit or comments on number three of keeping the board informed. As everyone knows, there's been a lot of uncertainty with the budget that the amount of expenditures that we request that is requested in the budget is by nature conservative. So that the actual expenditures is usually, you know, ninety five percent or ballpark of, you know, the requested amount under the budget. And of course, like how this manifested and still manifests is particularly when we don't have much of a cushion because of the reserve. When one looks at the budget that's being requested and the revenue that's projected based on enrollment, it can look like there's going to be not enough cash to cover expenditures for the end of the year if expenditures were a hundred percent. It was deemed, I guess, sufficiently important that an email was sent in mid October sort of highlighting from the district that the budgeted amounts is not, is the same as the actual amounts. It's now almost three months later than when that email was sent out. And I still haven't seen exactly what we're projecting expenditures to be. And concerning when we have, you know, less of of a runway and there's less of a cushion. And so I would like to see more in real time what our expenditures are tracking and, you know, and you know, how much, you know, whether we are in a better position than the budget would reflect because our expenditures aren't as much as the budget that, you know, they submitted and approved in sep, you know, in September.
If if you're asking for something specific for staff to do, that has to be something that comes from like the board as a whole.
I I'm making the comment that there was an email sent out three months ago alluding to the difference between actual expenditures and budgeted. We're now three months past that and as a board, we haven't received anything. And in my individual capacity, I'm not sure how that's being kept informed.
Deborah, you have your hand up. I'm I'm not, I'm not. We'll come back to that, but I want to know if what Deborah's got her hand up about is related.
No, mine's related to actually what David was talking about. So if if you're looking for for an answer on that, I that now would be a good time for the answer.
So we have, we do provide the monthly budget status reports. It does take some time for us to close the books at the end of the year and we can't really start reporting on the the start of the year until we actually know where we end the previous year. So in November and December, we started providing the September and October budget status reports. You will receive the December budget status report at the end of this month. And then in January, OSPI recalculates our apportionment funding based on our October enrollment and the annual average enrollment. So once we are able to close December, we'll have three months of actual data to provide. And we will know where we're moving and what the the future actually looks like because at this point we don't have a whole lot of data to provide. And we did provide the budget status reports last month. And continue to provide frequent status reports.
Yeah, and and I understand the budget status reports. What I'm getting to is not the enrollment, which I understand when that you know, is fixed, right? For apportionment and OSPI's purposes. What I'm talking about is that there was, I guess, enough concrete information in mid October to say that our budget projections were two million dollars likely to be more optimistic than when we were projecting based upon the delta between budgeted and actual expenditures. I haven't seen any information provided to the board regarding that, you know, concrete, you know, that number. And it seems to me if it's concrete enough to send a district wide email about it's concrete to provide some elucidation to the board about.
Can I? Your, your point is confusing me and I'm just wondering if the confusion rests in our budget, our our projected budget is based on our projected enrollment. And typically, in in many years past, it's been, well, you're on mute, but.
I I understand enrollment. It's not an enrollment question. It's an expenditure. It's not a revenue.
Okay, okay.
So when we, when we bring the budget to the board, when I brought the budget to the board in August for the public hearing. And over the last several years, we have taken a look at what the historical average spending is per year. And we do often couch these discussions and saying historically, we do spend X. Until we start getting more significant data on what we're actually spending, it will continue to be simply a projection throughout the next couple of months until we have a much more significant run where we can really more concretely project. I only have three out of twelve months data at this point. I do, we do operate a lot on historical trends and as we've mentioned before, our budgets are assumptions based on what we see and experience. And that when we adopted the budget in August, our experience said we historically spend ninety five percent, which translated to a slightly better picture than what the conservative estimates as well as the salaries that we reimburse from the technology fund represents.
Okay, I I get that. I'm just, I would have liked to see, there was an email to be precise on October twenty second that projected that, you know, our end, our actual budget is going to be one point seven to two million dollars better than the forecasted budget based upon the conservative estimates. What I haven't seen is a board member is any data. I understand that's historically the case, but presented sort of showing that that will continue to be the case this year. And I would expect that if it's a concrete enough data point to send a district wide email, then it's also a concrete enough data point to report to the board, particularly when we're in a situation when we're less than our budget reserves. And that's sort of the transparency, I guess, when a meat. I think being being up to date to the board is at least understanding precisely when numbers are provided in a district wide email for data backing that up to be provided to the board.
Yeah, that's something that as an individual board member, you could ask your like president and vice president to ask the superintendent for if you need an update on specific.
I've asked.
Okay. Not through me though.
So I've asked as a board member.
Right. But I'm just saying, like, like if an individual board member feels like we need, I mean, I guess you're asking, so.
I would like to be as informed. I would like to know as a board member that I can explain to any constituent on Mercer Island when in a district wide email, where the number is coming from and that and that I understand it. And when I've requested to be informed of why that is that I'm responded to, not as a, not as the board, not as direction, but to understand that public, like to me, being kept up to date as a board is being provided, you know, particularly for unusual email correspondence that are sent out concerning the budget that that's explained and the evidence is presented.
Okay, we we hear you Superintendent Kloski.
I just want to remind the board that this is a monitoring report for the previous year. So the discussion around the the timeliness of this and number three, we, I think staff is confused as to what Director Glawitz is referring to. This is your monitoring report. If you were going to make language changes, that would come at your next meeting. um referring to. This is your monitoring report. If you were going to make language changes, that would come at your next meeting.
Thanks, um. Deborah, you've had your hand up for a while. Do you want to chime in? And then can we take like a five-minute bio break, you guys, after whatever it is that you you want to talk about, Deborah? Sorry, I I realize we're like.
Yeah, I I don't think I'll take very long. Um, so this is in relation to what David was talking about in terms of the six to, or the eight percent uh budget reserves and and I don't know, I don't know how many. Well, David and I have the history of that because that was passed when we were both on board, but I don't think anyone else was on board when we passed that. And that was coming out of the McCleary fix. Um, and also where um, you know, the the bond uh ratings were so important. Um, I I continue to believe that fund balance is crucial to the financial health of a school district. I guess I'm just wondering, since our levy capacity went from twenty million to twelve million um thanks to the McCleary fix that didn't fix anything for Mercer Island, is that a realistic expectation at this point? Um, and and I guess that's my question. Is that a, like, tie deep? I know that you that you believed it was at the time that we modify the language for this criteria. Um, I just don't want to set us up to keep failing if it's, you know, based on what our funding is like now. Um, you know, is six percent more reasonable? Is it, is it, should we wait and see a year or two as we come out of COVID and, um, you know, a year or two away from the McCleary fix? Um, you know, like, what, what is your, is, has your recommendation changed? And and if so, why or why not?
So my recommendation wouldn't be to change it. I think one of the things that Superintendent Kloski and I have been talking about for years, pre-pandemic, um, is the fact that we were acknowledging that the district was starting to decline in enrollment. Uh, and then we had built plans in to slowly adjust our funding and our, not our funding, but our our expenditures and staffing model to look at that and reduce it over time so that we're we're trying to level set and make sure that we're we're in the the right place. In any other circumstance, I would say absolutely not. Don't change it. You know, this is, and this is what's kept us afloat, that our fund reserves, um, our fund balances is really what's been kee- keeping the district afloat in light of the 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 failure of S R funds to to be sufficient for us in light of uh enrollment stabilization being limited uh based on, you know, taking out S R funds and and whatnot. So there was, there were a lot of considerations that were going into that. Um, I think in someplace where there's potential for us to get back um over time. Uh, and it really does provide us a significant, not just a cushion, but it also provides us the flexibility to adjust for new programming, provides us the flexibility to handle unforeseen situations. Um, and it also gives us a high level of comfort and confidence in our cash flow because we get, only get our levy collections twice a year. Uh, and that's, and as we've seen in the charts over the last several years, those two spikes in the middle of the our our fiscal year, our levy collections, we spike up and then we travel down and then back up and down. Um, so that's really, our fund balance is really what keeps us uh on the straight and level. Um, are we going to get back there in the next two years? No, we're not. Uh, it's just not feasible. Potentially with the bills that are in the legislature right now in terms of uh enrollment stabilization, it could give us a significant leg up uh at the end of the year. Um, so I I would, my recommendation would be to keep it where it is for the next year. Uh, and maybe take a look uh at, you know, uh, some potential language about building it back up uh progress towards um maintaining that. Um, and so it's not just like a complete compliance, but if the district is below, there's a plan and progress being made to return.
So thank, thank you for that answer and and it really truly was a question. Um, there's individuals out there who love to misquote me and make assumptions about what I'm asking. I just want to make sure that we're still um looking at the right things. Um, like I said from the beginning, that I agree with a a solid fund balance for the very reasons that you said. And I appreciate the conservative approach in the budgeting and ex- and forecasting expenditures. I think it it's a whole lot better to end up the year with one point nine million um positive than negative because that would be a big problem. So um, so my question was a question and I will keep asking it. I just want to make sure that we were monitoring and have, you know, having too big of fund balance isn't good either. So we need to make sure that we're in the right place and as funding models change, um, I think it's our responsibility to make sure that we are um keeping it at the appropriate place. So thank you for that answer. And I see David nodding too, so.
Yeah, I I agree with you, Deborah. We we should revisit thi- this regularly. But uh, I I also think that the fact that we got so close to the bottom of the fund balance and we built it up with renumeration afterwards um is really indication that it is correct. This is, this was our hundred-year flood. And it got pretty close to the top of the levees right now. And if not for uh, this number came from Ty, so thank you, Ty. Uh, you know, if not for your financial stewardship around this, this district would have been in a real world of hurt. I mean, this was done four years ago now. We've been talking about it for four or five years since uh, since Donna started. We started talking about it. And so this was, this was pretty important. A pretty important life raft for the district for sure. And I think we did do a good job of of utilizing it when we thought we could. And I did notice even in your budget report to this city, to the community, you did mention that you would like to rebuild uh the fund balance over the next three to four years, uh probably with a savings of five hundred thousand dollars or so at a time, plus whatever other, you know, reimbursements we get presumably during this timeframe. So I appreciate that, that structure and that that management of the fund balance to bring us, bring us back. And this, this cushion is something we always use. So appreciate that. Um, I think the, I think when we do mark this as not in compliance, it is uh, it it's reflective of the board, the district and our, and good financial stewardship. I don't think it is a a reflective of a ding in any way as money mismanagement. When we mark this as not in compliance, it gives us permission and authority that before we spend money and as we think about future budgets, this can have a priority in terms of repayment and bringing our fund balance back up again. So we think about this and we mark this as not in compliance now before we're panicked with a lot of other things. Uh, and it allows us to do that with same minds and same head. So I appreciate that as well. So I will suggest that the board mark this as not in compliance for that reason. Um, and the board comment will be uh approximately that we expect this per per their report to the community. We expect this to be built up over their coming three to, say, five years. Uh, and this has been done with the approval and full notification to the board. So that would be uh my addendum for this. Uh, regarding regarding enrollment issues, there are kind of two places on this, on the, on the budget. One is the revenue coming in, the other side is expenditures. Do we, you know, I know we did the first set of revenue creation based on October uh enrollment. The second set will be done based on January enrollment numbers.
It's the the annual average at January. Sorry to interrupt, but the annual average.
That's perfect. So it's the annual average of the two. So the total amount of revenue decrease we expect to see, is that, how much is that? Ra- roughly.
Roughly, we're still looking at roughly about one point one point four million.
So out of our seventy-two million dollar roughly budget, one seventh uh, that's one, yeah, smaller than that, right? One over seventy-two. That's one over seventy-two in percent. I'm not thinking right now. Uh, but one percent, one point three percent off.
Yeah.
Okay, so that 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 helps us know. So expenditures will have to be reduced about two percent, give or take, to to meet, meet their incoming revenue numbers.
And when we, when we circle back to the the discussion on on the twenty-eighth and the study session, um, we'll have the updated revenue projections for the year. We'll have projected expenditures based on the three months of data. So we'll have three months of solid data that we can back it up with. Um, and then we'll have the revenue projections for the following year uh and comparing that to what we are spending, projecting to spend in the current year so that we can take a look at where is the gap um in terms of funding based on the enrollment projections. So there will be, there will be lots of numbers coming on the twenty-eighth uh in terms of how are we looking at what's coming for the next year? Because this is really, January is really when we start digging into budget development um and preparing for the next year.
Fair enough. Thank, thank you very much. This is, this is, this is helpful set of statistics.
I really meant it when I said I needed a bio break. Is everybody okay with taking a five-minute bio break until, say, like, eight, ten? And then just coming right back, yes, thumbs up. Okay, we are in recess. Am I unmuted? I'm having technical difficulties. Okay, woo, I'm making sound and being heard. Thank you all.
Yeah, you're unmuted.
Okay, thanks. Um, okay, so we, this is a, this is an action item tonight. Uh, we need to discuss if we are finding the superintendent to be in, well, the district to be in compliance, the superintendent to be in compliance, correct?
Superintendent.
Superintendent, yeah. Um, I wrote down what you said earlier, David. Do you want me to read it back for the number, um, number five?
Sure.
Um, you said, basically, you said, you said, and I may have gotten some of this wrong, so please correct me. Um, you said, per report, per the report to the community, we expect this to be built up over three, built back up again over three to five years. This was done with the the full approval and notification of the board.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then marked as not in compliance, but I think overall, the whole thing is in compliance.
Right. Uh, do people have input on that?
I was just going to say, I second David's motion.
Was that actually a motion, David?
Sure, let's make it a motion.
Okay, and we have a second. Uh, any further discussion? You? Tam? No, okay, uh, fine. Uh, all in favor of finding the fu- okay, finding the superintendent overall in compliance, but with this, with the modification, or it's not modification, but with, with the details as, as, um, given by Director D'Souza, um, that I just read. Uh, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, no nays and no abstentions, so that passes by a vote of, uh, five to zero. Um, Donna, do you want me to email you that, or did you get it?
Uh, Michelle is on as an attendee as well, so between the two of us, if we feel like we didn't get it, um, we'll ask for the email.
Okay, that's fine. Great, thank you so much.
Just a quick note of thanks to Ty. Thank you very much, Ty. Uh, this has been a terrible time to, you know, for, for the community as a whole, as well as managing a budget in, in this, uh, in this type of environment. Um, as we can see from the federal government, if anybody can budgets go awry, and, uh, I, I think, uh, silver star to managing a budget to one to two percent error. Thank you very much.
Um, okay, moving on to board policy eighteen hundred O E eight asset protection.
This is also Ty, but this is again your, um, annual monitoring for the previous year for operational expectation, um, number eight, asset protection. And this is also a level one. So of course, um, Ty will go through them, and if the board has any changes that they want to make or any comments, um, that can be added prior to, um, your action.
All right, so asset aid is about asset protection. It's really about how we safeguard the, the mostly the physical assets of the district and, uh, our insurance and liabilities and, and whatnot. So number one is to maintain insurance coverage on district property against theft and casualty loss to one hundred percent of replaceable value and maintain adequate liability insurance for the board, staff and district. We are a full member of the Washington State Schools Risk Management Pool. And they provide a significant amount of coverage and assistance, and we've worked closely with them over the last several years as, uh, and parts of, um, liability reduction measures, um, through transportation and policy improvements and and whatnot. So we've actually been able to reduce our liability needs through the risk pool, through their work. Maintain insurance coverage against liability losses to board members, staff and district itself in an amount that is reasonable for school districts of comparable size and character. We are, uh, fully covered, the board, uh, and all staff, uh, for all, um, uh, for errors and omissions and, uh, and liability issues through the risk management pool. Not allow unburdened, unbonded personnel access to material amounts of district and school funds. Um, all of our staff go through a vetting process to make sure that they are, um, um, have, uh, good backgrounds, uh, and no significant problems uh, and are also insured as part of our, uh, liability package through the risk pool. Implement best practices, protect the district's facilities and equipment from improper wear, tear or insufficient maintenance. Um, uh, Director Kuhn's team of, uh, facility, uh, staff and custodians and facility schedulers do a phenomenal job of making sure that our facilities are in proper wear and shape, and, uh, we do have, uh, policies, uh, for facility use um, to maintain that, uh, coverage. Not unnecessary exposure, not unnecessarily expose the district, the board or staff to legal liability. And this really falls under, uh, Executive Director Battersby's, uh, realm in terms of making sure that we have all of our staff policies in place, our staff are trained. And that we maintain their annual trainings, um, uh, to, uh, to keep us, uh, in the straight and narrow. Number six, protect intellectual property, information files and fixed assets from loss or significant damage. The current, uh, this fall, um, we, uh, had, uh, significant kind of introspective moment through the school in terms of data security and cybersecurity, uh, and, uh, they sent us a checklist of things that we, uh, they wanted to see before we could, uh, get a rate reduction and we had, I believe, five out of the six in place already. Um, so it was, we, and Director Ronser has done a phenomenal job of, of, and his team have done a great job of, of protecting our cybersecurity and, and limiting our risk uh, as well, um, as being partnerships with larger agencies like um, the Northwest Regional Data Center and WISIPSE, which provide a Skyward and a lot of the other, um, services that we use that provide us security through their services. Um, properly preserve and dispose of all records related to affairs or business of the district. We have, uh, extensive record retention policies. We've done great trainings, um, with records retention. Michelle Mueller has become one of our records gurus, um, and we are uh, constantly on the hunt for, um, grants from the Secretary of State. For record scanning, we have a record retention system that we are in the process of trying to adopt, um, that will allow us to uh, scan the vast majority of our records and go paperless in, in a lot of ways. Um, and, uh, save a lot of time and effort and be able to properly preserve and dispose of records as needed. Um, number eight, not invest funds and securities that are insecure or not authorized by law. All of our investment activities are managed by King County uh, treasurer. They have, uh, a treasury pool, uh, that they use to invest district funds. Uh, and, uh, that is audited by the state of Washington as well as, uh, outside agencies and, and, uh, CPA firms. Not acquire lease encumber or dispose of real property. Um, real property means land. Um, we are not in the business of selling district property anymore. Long ago they did, and we've paid for it ever since. Um, so we have no interest in selling property at this time. Not engender the district's public image credibility or its ability to accomplish its mission. We strive very hard to, uh, our public image and our credibility is, uh, essentially an asset for us as we continue to do the work of education. Uh, and it's been, I will not say it's been without its challenges, uh, over the last year and a half, uh, through the pandemic. But judging from the quality of the videos that, uh, Deputy Superintendent, uh, Rundle shared this tonight, uh, as well as the comments from the parents and the staff, uh, we're doing great work, uh, and we are succeeding in our mission. So those are the points, uh, for O E eight asset protection. Um, we believe that we are in compliance, uh, and we love to hear questions and comments.
Um, I just want to say thank you. These are the kind of things you only worry about when there's a problem. Uh, so the fact that we have you worrying about it all the time so that we don't have to, um, so that when something does arise, it's managed. So thank you. I know you lose sleep every day over this and the budget. Um, so, so thank you for, um, making sure that we're protected. And, oh. I was gonna make a motion unless anyone else had anything to say. Guys, oh.
I just have one question, actually, um, related to insurance. Is, is there any way in which our insurance needs have changed as a result of the pandemic? Um, and if you don't have an answer for me, I didn't give you any heads up on that question. You don't have to answer it. I'm just like, I'm just looking at it and thinking like, oh, like, is everything the same in terms of like what insurance coverage we have and what insurance coverage we?
You wanna go Ty or do you want me to?
Why don't you go first?
So there are, the risk management pool, um, really does keep us really well informed and all throughout COVID, they have kept us, um, really informed of what we need to have in place to be protected legally, um, when it came to all the different COVID protocols. We've received, um, sometimes it felt like daily information from them. When new information came out from Department of Health, they were also weighing in on how that was going to impact, um, our insurance. I know that there was at least one attorney that worked through the risk management pool with all the school districts, um, that were in it, that, um, called himself all things COVID. And so we would have a lot of questions that he would, um, respond to, to when it came to COVID things, whether it was about individuals, whether it was about overall practices or procedures that we were implementing and, um, were we, were we going to have, um, liabilities, issues or not? So they've been very responsive during COVID.
Tangentially to that, um, the risk pool is not the only insurance pool that we're a part of. We're also a part of, um, the unemployment and workers' compensation pool through the P S E S D. The workers' compensation pool, um, is a self-insurance pool. So we all chip in and they work with an actuary to determine what the needs are, and we maintain rates. Um, so, uh, there have been some increased costs related to workers' compensation from staff being out for, you know, due to COVID-related items, hospitalizations, those kind of things within the pool. And what happens is the pool all kind of feels the pain. Um, so there, there is, uh, there is, there have been some changes to requirements related around that. But by and large, fiscally, in terms of the fiscal insurance impact, it has not been significant to the district.
It doesn't surprise me at all that you are a hundred percent on top of this, so thank you. Okay, Deborah.
Thank you, unless anyone else had anything, but I assume they would have spoken up by now. I move that we find the superintendent in compliance of, I can't get back to the front screen of, uh, O E.
Eight.
Eight asset protection.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Uh, no knees and no abstentions. That passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Okay. Um.
Is it in Tucker?
Yes.
Um, I, I know I sent them a text and I don't know if they saw it, but it is after eight o'clock, so.
Oh, yeah.
To the rest of the agenda, if our student representatives would so choose to like to leave because they do have school tomorrow, um, this is a great seg- segue time for, for them.
I should have said it at the break, actually. Um, they also have finals coming up, so you guys go study. Unless you really, really want to hear the rest of it, but go study. Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, moving on to post-monitoring language review, board policy eighteen hundred O E three, appropriate treatment of community members. And this is a language review.
So I move that we postpone this. Um, I think the board retreat in a couple of weeks, we're gonna go over a lot of board policies and some of them I think have interrelated parts. And I think there's, uh, some language that could be revised, uh, here to make it more comprehensive, but I think we best in, in part of a, a comprehensive discussion because policies relate one into another. Um, so I move that we postpone this to, uh, some point in the future, following the board meeting, or like the, the, the board retreat in January.
January twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
You're talking about.
Until after.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, um, all in favor of postponing the discussion of board policy eighteen hundred O E three, appropriate treatment of community members, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No knees and no abstentions. That passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you for that. Um, okay, board policy eighteen hundred O E nine, communication and support to the board. This is also a language review. He. Yeah. So this is for discussion only. Um, did any board members have any suggestions related to the language? Did everyone have a chance to review it?
On this one, I think there's some just perhaps a slightly antiquated language that could use updating uh, regarding, uh, means of like publication for vacancies on the board. And, uh, similarly, uh, for different reasons, this one be just because it's so voluminous. Um, but I think there's certain just sort of administrative, like ministerial type updates in terms of, I think it's supposed to be in the reporter like three weeks prior for bo- board vacancies, and I'm not sure that that's the best place. Um, so I would also move that we postpone this for, um, the, you know, following, uh, the board retreat of January twenty-eighth.
I, I totally agree that that language is antiquated. I hadn't really thought about it. It's not so much the language is antiquated, but really that's not how people get information much these days, like, like you, it, a person might want to also advertise like on social media, you know, letting the community know or by email or on the website. So, um, I, I, I'm happy to either talk about that right now or to postpone it. What do other people want to do?
I think it's reasonable to postpone and deal with it comprehensively. There's, there's a few other issues that probably could be dealt with. It would be interesting to, um, if any language changes, uh, recommended, people come with a mock-up version too, and that might make it easier.
That's.
Um, I prefer to postpone it where we have something. Um, I think there's probably legal issues with notice. RCWs dictate, and I don't think the RCWs have caught up with, um, modern times, surprise, surprise. So we just need to make sure we're in compliance with that. And I don't know, my gut says you do, you put the bare bones minimum in the policy, but that doesn't mean that that's practice that, that you can advertise lots of different places, but, but the policy needs to comply with the law.
Or the policy could say, for, I'm sorry, Donna.
Say that, uh, Aaron and I were, were both texting and saying, but it's in the RCW, it hasn't been updated. So of course we have to comply with that. So you're spot on, Director Larry, exactly right. And of course, we communicate so many others. We do actually still have to put a posting in about your regular board meetings as well. And that's why we get to pay for that too, but that's because that's what the ICW requires. There's.
But there's no reason that we can't go beyond that, right? Like.
Board meetings are published all over social media and our website and all that.
And, right, so, yeah.
You just want to be careful in policies to be as, um, frankly, as general as possible, because otherwise it invites, um, it, it, it invites problems if one thing is left off some time for something and you just, guy. Anyway, we can, we can discuss another time. I mean, there's. That, you know, and otherwise appropriate, or, you know, that.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, okay, so do we have a motion? Then?
I motion that we table this for further discussion or for discussion at a further date.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of, um, tabling this for discussion at a later date, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm.
All opposed, please say nay. No knees and no abstentions, uh, that passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Um, next we have the consent agenda.
I move we approve their consent agenda is published.
Second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda as published, please say aye. Thank you. I lost my signs. I still will. It's all opposed, please say nay. Uh, no knees, no abstentions. That passes by a vote of five to zero. I should make new signs. Um, we are now at superintendent's announcements.
I do have a couple of things. First of all, I remind you to everyone that this coming Monday is Martin Luther King Junior Day. And it's January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and it will mark the twenty-seventh anniversary of the National Day of Service. The day was established to honor the life and legacy of Dr. King and to encourage all Americans to volunteer to improve their communities. Americans celebrated the first official Martin Luther King Day, which is the only federal holiday commemorating an African American on Monday, January twentieth, nineteen eighty-six. And then in nineteen eighty-four, Congress designated the holiday as a national day of service and marking the third Monday in January every year as the Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service. A day on, not a day off. So I encourage everyone to, um, look in ways that they can serve their community on, on that day off. Also, um, reminding the board that the short legislative session has now started. Opening day was Monday. It is a sixty-day session. I will be sending you, I'm one of the updates that I've received that will actually have a bill watch that has all the, the bills that are on there. And I think we need to pay, um, some attention to House Bill fifteen ninety, which is enrollment stabilization. That's an important one that we're gonna want to watch. And if you are so inclined to have some advocacy, um, to any of our. to any of our legislators, that would be a great one to speak to them about, which is matched as Senate Bill 5663. So I'll send more information on that in the update, but there's no harm during a short session in sending those emails and doing the advocacy work that is going to be so essential for our district as we transition. Yes, out of the pandemic, I'm not going to go a lot into it, but also we need to look back to them clearly fix because as Director Larry pointed out earlier in the meeting, that, that funding formula did not did not support Mercer Island in, in our budgetary initiatives moving forward with the levy being lowered and basic ed certainly to come up, but there's still a huge gap. Pandemic put that all into the, the pot and kind of stirred it up, but now we have to face the realities of that funding formula. So watching these bills will be really, really important. And if you feel like making a phone call or sending an email, I will encourage you to do so. I will be doing that. That's all the announcements.
Thank you, Superintendent Kloski. Um, board announcements, inquiries and reports, starting with our ledge rep report, Dan?
Yeah. So just quickly building off of that. Thank you, Superintendent Kloski. Um, so yeah, like the, without question, the biggest one is the Senate Bill 5566, House Bill 1590. Point of perhaps local pride in the Senate, the sponsor is Senator Wellman. One of the, of many, of many sponsors in the House is Tana Sen. I think as of yesterday, 25 state Congress individuals had signed on to the bill in support of it. So I think fingers crossed that it will hopefully pass. As Superintendent Kloski said, it's a short session, 60 days for Mercer Island. It's significant as it is for all districts across the state in aggregate. It represents about $522 million of funding. There were, I think, 17 people that presented to the Senate Committee yesterday. The overwhelming majority were in support of the bill. In fact, there was just one individual from a think tank, the Washington Policy Center, who spoke against. It seems likely that some form of it hopefully will pass. Reichdahl, I thought interestingly, had some comments in terms of what it would look like on a go-forward basis if it was the past this year. And I think what it's setting up to do is perhaps some sort of declining like formula when it comes to enrollment stabilization after this year. Hopefully would, it would still peg to previous years, you know, to 1920, when it comes to state apportionment dollars. And then for subsequent years, you know, looking to 22, 23, et cetera, that you might just see a percentage of that. There's just a couple of other House bills that are worth mentioning. I mean, there's many on education. One is 1664, which will give a little bit more state apportionment money when it comes to the prototypical school formula. I think there's been recognition that when it comes like staffing for school nurses, it's, you know, frankly ridiculous, like under the current one, I think it works out to less than one nurse for the entire district or something like that. So I think on the margins, that will, you know, be beneficial. There's one regarding transportation and receiving actual reimbursement for the cost for certain special ed transportation, which would be helpful. And then just a couple of others. There's one, highly capable services. I think Hasagawa is the sponsor for that. Trying to expand highly capable services and also to monitor the, the participation of minorities in highly capable services across the state and to make that a reporting requirement. And I guess modeled on certain other states, there's a House Bill that will be more favorable for retirees to come out of retirement, to teach and to not forfeit as much of their pension, which I think would, you know, make sense particularly, you know, as many districts ours included, you know, there's the prospect of staffing shortages and how to make, you know, sort of a proposition that's a win all around. But we'll know the answers quickly because as Superintendent Kloski said, it's a short session.
Thank you for that. Um, who else has a board report to make? Tam?
So last week was, oh, this week, I attended the Mercer Island PAC meeting. And we talked more about grading for equity and there were discussions about, you know, perspectives that we, the administrators, they gave us like two different perspectives to kind of look at how just further flush out what it means. And it was really, what I got out of that meeting was that it's really amazing how during this time, as obviously the teacher, staff and administrators are dealing on a daily like crisis with all the increasing COVID cases and keeping everything stabilized, but also managing to think about the future and continue to lay the groundwork to make system improvements. And so that is something that is a really unique skill because oftentimes when people deal with crisis, they kind of just bunker down and can't think about the future. So I really appreciate, you know, our, those who work for the district, the ability to manage the crisis right now, but also thinking about the future. So that was really a good meeting. And also, I also had an opportunity to meet with some of the families who have left Mercer Island or are thinking of leaving, leaving Mercer Island School District. And of course, you know, there's a host of reasons why they left and a lot of them centered around communication or, or it seems like there's a lot of miscommunication or, you know, until we unpack it, it's really hard to see where the miscommunications are at or but what I got out of that meeting also was that regardless of whether they're at in their connection to the school district, that these families were really still committed community members who want to stay in communication and conversation with us. And so that was really a positive sign. And so I hope board members continue to reach out to, you know, folks across the district to really understand what people are going through. Because right now we're all going through so many different things and see how we can work together to make sure that we are all able to serve, you know, all of our community's need. So those were really during this time reminds me of what's so special about Mercer Island. And I told Lydia in my meeting with her, I go, really what makes us exceptional is really our community, right? Of how we have such a motivated and committed and supportive community. And so how do we really capitalize on that? So, yeah, so during this is the first week of school for me, a little tiring. You know, I had never had so many COVID cases in my class. I were actually having to, next week I have to move online because I have so many issues. But so it's nice a reminder of, you know, of the blessings that we have in our community. So that's, but I got away, my takeaway for this week, remind us of all the little blessings that we have.
Thank you. David, did you have any board report? Deborah?
Uh, yeah, a couple. Um, before break, I attended the West Mercer PAC where there was still a conversation about school improvement plan. Very, very detailed, committed group of parents there that really want to dive in and understand the data. And Principal Isaacson is doing a great job working with the parents there. This week I attended the Island Park PAC and Mr. Hoffman had, it's Anne Reese, right? The instructional coach at Island Park came and presented about what her role is to the families. And, and I just love it. I think, I think it was very, I don't want to say it was calculated. It was good timing. And, but every time I hear an instructional coach, either, either an instructional coach or someone talking about an instructional coach and the role that they play to help teachers with their professional development, it's the more and more I learn. So, you know, this wasn't recorded. I would definitely think, you know, it was a great presentation, something the district might want to look at in terms of, you know, so the parents really understand what, what the instructional coaches roles are. And so it was just, it was just a great opportunity. I think the, the parents there really appreciated it. I want to just do a general shout out to our, our staff across district-wide. Um, you know, we're seeing other districts falling by the wayside in terms of, in terms of going to remote and the level of commitment from, from every single employee I've talked to is to keep our kids in school and engaged is just, it, it warms my heart. And, and Tam, I appreciate your, your sentiments of gratitude and, and I, you know, I just want to extend it to this. You know, it'd be so easy to throw in the towel with the districts around us closing or temporarily closing and knowing that I can, when parents ask me and, and kids ask me, I can confidently say it, it will be the last option that, that our district will close. And so anyways, just, I know the commitment. I know that everyone is, you know, burning the candle at both ends. So just, I, I don't think we can say thank you enough for that. So, you know, it starts at the top and, and, and goes all the way down. So, thank you.
I second that. Um, I second all, like everything you said, but I especially second the, the last portion of it. I, I attended a DEI, PTA DEI committee meeting on, on Monday, on the 10th. That was excellent. Just really exciting to hear about everything that is going on in the schools right now and among parents getting the, they're, they've created a Asian-American Pacific Islander affinity group on Facebook that is just kind of getting rolling now. So check that out if you're interested in that. And also attended the superintendent's Equity Advisory Committee where before that, where again, we were hearing about, like all the exciting stuff that's going on at the middle school and at the high school. And there sounds like there's a lot of really interesting stuff queued up for February this year for, for Black History Month. And that we may be hearing more from, from some of the students as we get closer to, to that time. But I'm like, I'm really proud of what, what the students and teachers and administrators involved are doing there. Like, um, I think for a long time as a parent in Mercer Island, people would say, well, what's it like for, you know, minorities on Mercer Island? And I was like, well, you know, it's not a very diverse community or like, and most of the diversity is, is in the form of like Asian-ness, you know? So, so I, I was always kind of like, it's not, it's not a bad place to, to live or to be a student, but I can, I, I really feel now that we're moving in such a positive direction and that we're, you know, even though the demographics of the island haven't changed much, that, that there's a lot of like active thought going into making the district a more welcoming place for students. And I, I love that that is both coming from the bottom up and being supported from the top down, you know? So, thank you, everyone who's involved in that. And I wanted to also say, I'm so happy to see that the high school has set up Say Something, which is the anonymous reporting tool for reporting concerns about, you know, self-harm, bullying, depression, whatever. I'm sorry, is that, there, there's an actual description of it here, so I don't misspeak. Oh, it just, it just disappeared. But you guys know what I'm talking about, part of the Sandy Hook Promise movement. And that is something that I was really interested in before I was on the board. And so I'm really happy to see that, that all the parents who worked for a long time. I hear it's a secure anonymous safety concerns. All the parents that, that have advocated for this and, and helped to make it happen. I'm really grateful that, that they have. So, thank you.
Can I add one thing? I forgot, because it was yesterday. PTA council meeting was yesterday and it's, that's one of my favorite groups. It's just the movers and shakers of the district. And, and a couple of things that were talked about were, you know, there was, there was, there was talk of the levy and, you know, we didn't actually, I think, really mention it tonight. I mean, I know that we're all aware of it. And just, I know there's, there's board directors that are way more involved in the, in, in the daily workings of it than I am. But, you know, what I'm really trying to focus on and what I urge the PTA council to really focus on is if we get around out there to vote, submit a ballot and vote yes for our kids, then we pass no problem. So, you know, looking to the positives, there's always going to be things to complain and gripe about. But, you know, the levy is about our kids and just making sure ballots are dropping next week and making sure that we're, you know, all doing our part to make sure that we get as many of those ballots returned as possible. So I know, like I said, I know that, I know David spent a lot of time. I know Dan spent a lot of time. I'm not sure about Maggie Ty and Tam, but I have not, but that is the part that I am playing is just encouraging everyone to actually vote.
I think I signed up to be a sign waiver, but yes, thank you. Good reminder. Um, we need to recess to executive session. So we are all, board members are all going to leave this call, go to a different Zoom, have our executive session and then come back. I am guessing that that meeting won't be longer than half an hour. Does anyone want me to re? This or lower? I'll turn in 10 minutes. I'll turn in ten minutes.
There I am. Okay. Thanks, Andrew. Um, I second that. I guess all in favor of adjourning this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. That passes by a vote of two to zero. Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Bye, Andrew.
Have a great night.
Thanks, you too.